Our first order of business, we're running a little bit late, apologize. It's going to be 241 Franklin Street. Mr. DeBonner, and I believe there was a representative from the Solar Company. Mr. DeBonner?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a representative from the Solar Company?
All right. I think there was an email from Joanne that...
Brianna.
Yeah, Brianna couldn't make it.
Brianna. Yeah, I did see that. Is that Brianna? I thought that was in the butter.
No, it was 241.
Where were you?
We're at 229.
Okay. And we got 241. And we don't have anybody from the Solar Company. What I would kind of suggest is, I think the board members have read or seen what your proposal is. I don't know that I've seen anything from the Solar Company, unless Gordon or anybody has seen anything from the Solar Company as to what they want to do.
I haven't seen anything.
Did you make it out there?
Yep.
I did, I did.
Okay, you want to have that gentleman?
Uh, no, I just met with the property owner.
The pro?
About that, to see exactly what was going on.
All right. Mr. DeBonner, I mean, I can ask you to make a presentation. The problem is that if we don't have the Solar Company here, our hands are tied. We, I did a little research on that, and I did see that the site plan required all the trees. It wasn't Conservation Commission, so they have no, they don't really care one way or the other. So the issue, which is sort of between you and the Solar Company, is the whether they want to put up the fence or the trees. I did check with Joanne. I know that Joanne had sent, she had sent out an email to the gentleman that sent the letter in the last time, but he's not here. I'm not sure what to do. We can ask him to come again. If he doesn't come again, unfortunately, I don't think we got the power to open up the site plan to make that change unless they're agreeable.
Was there any discussion on the road location? Or, I mean, did anyone find out if the road is actually in the correct spot on the site plan?
I do not, I did not review an ASBIL plan, and I don't know...
I don't know that we have.
It's probably, it's not finished yet, so what they do will be in ASBIL.
Yeah. Okay. Based on my representations, it looks like the road is a little closer to your property than it should be. But I'm not an engineer. I can just go by the trees that you planted, which you probably know where the rear of your property line is and the distance between those trees and the road. The planning board does not require an ASBIL certification. It would be Conservation. So until the project's completed, we don't know about the road. I can have her reach out to them again to see if they will come in. But at this point, I don't believe, and I'll put it out to the board, there's not much that we can do. Any comments, Amy?
Well, I believe that we can call them in. If the road is in the wrong place, they need to move it.
Okay, but we need an ASBIL certification.
If it appears that it's in the wrong position, then we require them to give us a plan showing us where it is.
Okay.
And if it's wrong, move it. Because if there isn't the room to put the trees in there that the plan calls for, then that's up to them to move it. We, we're not in a position to say, okay, we signed off on a site plan, and now you're not following it. If you're not following it, you need to follow it.
Well, this, this whole thing was about the placing the trees with a fence. Didn't it really have anything to do with the road being in the wrong place, right?
Correct.
Well, it does to the fact that you can't put the trees in there that were required on the plan. I believe that's what they were talking about.
Yeah, like, you know, I went out and I talked to Kevin White. He's the superintendent there. You know, he showed me where they actually dug for the trees. He showed me where the fence is going, and he says, according to him, he says the contractors used GPS to put the road in, and, but, you know, you won't know that till there's an ASBIL.
Right.
And, you know, his, the thing, what I understand is they just want to swap the trees for a fence. Pretty simple. That's, that's what my understanding is.
We, again, we, we were approached, I asked months ago if we got a fence. I was told no. We were approached by the Solar Company saying, would you guys be willing to put a fence in? And we said, well, you know, we'd like the fence to extend the property line. I don't want a fence that's just going to be 200 feet in the back of my house. Like, they extend the whole property line. They told us that's, that was no. They couldn't do that.
Mm-hmm.
So then we said, fine, we don't want a fence. We'd rather have the trees if it's not to be the fence. Now they're coming back to us saying, we'd like to put the fence in, and we're saying, that's fine. We're going back to our original proposal of making the fence, the whole, you know, 375 feet in the back of the property. The reason, from my point of view, the reason they're coming to us is because the road is in the wrong spot. There's not enough spot to put two rows of trees on their side of the property line, between the property line and the road. That, that, that doesn't exist, that's basically. I know, I don't know how in-depth you got out there.
Well, Kevin, Kevin was saying he's going to give you 208 feet of fence, period. That's what he told me.
That's fine. So I guess now the question becomes, if the trees aren't in the correct spot, which, there's, there's a, they're on that, the site plan, right? So they have to be put in the right spot. Because I guess if they can be put in the right spot, they can be put in the right spot. From my point of view, and from the plan that I had, from the surveyor, those trees are in the middle of that road.
Amy, any comments or questions?
I would just agree that if the road is in the wrong place, we should verify the site plan was done correctly by asking them to show us where the road was built so that we can compare it to the site plan and verify what happened to protect each party.
Okay. You realize, Mr. DeBonner, and I don't have a problem with making that request, that if they do move the road, then you're probably going to end up with trees and our fence, but that's okay.
That's fine, yeah. I believe that's why they're approaching us, because the cost of move the road is less than putting the fence in, so.
The general consensus of the board is that you want to, we can request that they come in next week, ask them to come in our next meeting, and ask them to provide us with some sort of an ASBIL certification as to the road.
That would be great. I'd need to see that.
Gordon?
Yep.
Yeah, sounds good.
Need a motion?
I don't know that we really need a motion, because we really don't have all the parties here, but I think...
Make a motion, and the board makes a motion for the, for them to provide us with the information we're looking for. I mean, how else are we going to get it? You can't wait for them to come forward.
No, I think in the site plan review process, is there a requirement that an ASBIL be provided?
Well, if I'm correct, how are we going to find out?
I've looked at it a bit, so if it's in there, then I would take an act of a vote. But I think initially, I don't know that we need a vote. We're going to ask them to come in. If they don't come in, then I think we really need to review the site plan process and see what happens we have.
Well, the thing of it is, we keep kicking it down the roof.
Why, I understand.
I mean, it was supposed to be tonight.
They were supposed to...
So you say, okay, now they're going to be here at the end of August, and then we're going to have them come back in September. And that's what I'm saying, is if we take a motion here to say to them, we want to know where the road is located at the next meeting, and then we have something to discuss. I mean, if they say it's in the proper place, then at that point, then we deal with that.
Okay. I think we need ASBIL certification. Then we got a letter from, I got the justice, I got 229. We got a letter asking a continuance from number 241.
That's the sole?
I think you got, are you 241?
They're out front.
The people are out front, out front.
Okay, and I think the email came through you, Amy?
Not through me. She got the email. She knows, so she got the email from Joanne from me.
So which email was that?
There was a letter that came through...
From another butter.
Rick?
Do we have one?
You have any intake on this?
Yeah, I don't, I think, I don't think it was, it came in time for her to get it in the folder.
Well, I did get it, so I did, I did read it.
Email.
I guess the biggest question is, is, and I think we need to look at the bylaw itself to make sure that what authority we do have with that. But I, but I think I'd be looking for a motion to continue, and if they don't show up, then I'd be more than happy to take a vote to order them to come in as long as we have that authority in the bylaw, or to go to...
We have the authority to request them to come in. I mean, my motion would be to request them to come in the next time and tell us, verify whether the road is located behind the DeBonners. That's my motion.
I would second that.
Okay.
Hold on.
One more comment?
Just hold on a second. Hold on, hold on. We have a motion on the floor, so just... Amy, you second that?
I did.
Okay, I will open it up for discussion, so go ahead.
If you're going to request an ASBIL, I would ask that the trees be shown in, in the location that this, they're supposed to be on the original site plan, on that ASBIL as well. So we can demonstrate where the road is now, where the road should be, and where the trees are in relation to both.
I see a point. The problem with an ASBIL, an ASBIL is when the project's completely finished. I know when I was out there, they were still working on a bridge, so I'm going to say that they're probably not anywhere near the ASBIL phase. So to ask them to come up on an ASBIL and then have them move the road afterwards would be a change in the ASBIL. So if the road's in the wrong place, they should be able to use GPS technology to determine that. And then if we're going to ask them to put the road in the right place, and when it comes up as far as the ASBIL, then the ASBIL will show where it's finally going to be.
Well, the ASBIL would be the entire project, correct?
Correct.
We're looking for a spot about 300 feet long.
Yeah, but we can't tell them just do an ASBIL on each section. They got to do an ASBIL.
My motion was his property line behind the house. That's all. Not, not the whole project.
Well, there'll also be a butter, like, that's up off of Franklin Street, too.
Well, I mean, we're looking at one, one aspect of this right now, so.
Correct.
I don't know what that other part is looking for.
And that other butter is not here. So, all right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Ask them to commit. Now, we're not going to ask them to commit on ASBIL. We'll ask them to commit with some sort of certification as to where the road is.
Right.
Okay. I'm going to go to a vote. Amy?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Okay, Mr. DeBonner, we will send them on a letter. I would not expect an ASBIL. We can ask some sort of certification as to where that road is in conjunction, and then it's going to be up to them. They decide to move the road, put the trees, in my conversation, and I think the same with her, was that they'd rather put the fence, and the question is, how much fence?
Correct.
All right. We can check with the office, and we'll get an agenda time for the next, next meeting. All right?
Right.
Okay, thank you. We're a little bit early for our next appointment.
Do you have a bill?
Yes. We have a bill here. This is mine. We have a bill here for... It doesn't say who's for.
Appetizing?
It says appetizing. It doesn't say who's for.
It's for the registry deeds, for the signatures.
Okay.
Recording of the signature.
I'll make a motion to pay this bill to Plymouth County Registry of Deeds for recording of the current year's planning board signatures in the amount of $107.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Go to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. 4-0-0. We need three signatures on it.
Yeah.
We got two more minutes. The next item for discussion, verbatim, meeting minutes. I asked that to be put on, and I want the board to think about, I think, the problems that can occur when you use verbatim in meeting minutes. And that's why I put it on, and I would just like for them to think about it. I think the board at some point took a vote, correct me if I'm wrong, to require verbatim minutes?
Correct. For hearings.
For hearings?
Just for hearings.
Okay. Well, I'd like to take a look at that again at our next meeting. Okay, and discussion items, I have Mr. John Puckett. Is Mr. Puckett here? Okay, the only problem is, is we have a 7 o'clock, and I'm one minute away, so I'm going to wait a minute, take the 7 o'clock, and then I'll get to you.
Right.
Amy Dwyer. Come up to the microphone. Just identify yourself for the record.
I'm Amy Dwyer. I am actually inquiring in regards to renting the space at 894 Plymouth Street, Unit 3, for my husband's business. He owns Three Sons Customs, which is a storefront and glass company. And just actually, this was my second visit to you guys, just to make sure that everything was in play properly, so that we can grab the keys and we can occupy the space. There is no actual active, like, customer base showroom or anything. It's strictly for purposes of working inside the workshop, using it for storage, making sure that our materials are there and ready to go to a job site. Anything that's residential will be picked up at the residence and delivered back to the residence.
Amy, you have a... I just have, I do recall you're on Zoom, and you were questioning whether you wanted to put some signage either in the windows or on the building.
Yep.
And a sign out front.
Just a small, the one question right now, because we don't know what the owner of this space is going to do with any type of board out front. He's unsure of what he's going to do, so we just want to make sure that it's okay that if we were to have a small sign inside the building that would show, like, to the street from the window, just to, like, identifying which spaces are ours, that if we had to get a delivery, they knew where to go.
I did reach out to Paul.
Okay.
And gave him my thoughts, and I'll share that with the board. I kind of think you need to file a site plan application.
Okay.
And I think there should be some sort of a plan which identifies which bay you're going to be in, traffic flow, and some of the basic items on a site plan approval. And I think, whatever the board decides, that the rest of the requirements have the potential of being waived. Your signage, we can't waive the signage. That's a building problem. So we'll ask the board what their feelings are. Amy?
My only thought is, is Paul going to come in to do signage for all of the units?
I mean, I can't, I can't answer that, but I think if, if she submitted, or they submitted one particular site plan that should cover all the bays that are in there, we wouldn't want them to do a site plan for each bay, but...
No, no, no. I meant, like, if the owner was going to apply to put, like, you know, a sign that's in front of any of the other industrial parks, then until he, like, he did that, then her sign would go on his property, so it's kind of, like, she's going to rent, so to do a site plan to rent is, is a lot.
The problem we have is, I don't believe, I think we, there's one other tenant that I'm told, I don't believe there's a site plan for that project on record.
Yes, there is.
There is? Who submitted it?
Absolutely.
I know that there's, there's a plumber that's next to one of us, and I know Paul occupies one of the spaces.
Correct.
The other one has nobody in it as of right now. It's empty.
Okay.
I thought we were going to have the site plan here for the meeting. It's in our office.
No, I wasn't aware of. Should have made it. I didn't know that there was a site plan.
Yeah, this is, well, I mean, they can't build the building without the site plan. So there was, there's a site plan, and what we normally do is we take the site plan, and then we overlay what she's going to use on it, and we check to make sure that there's enough parking.
That's fine.
Spaces, and that, you know, if there's four units in there, there's 30 spaces, she's going to use five, there's, you know, that's, that's typically how it's done.
I did reach out to Paul, and that would be something that he'd have to do, because we need to know, again, parking and so forth and so on.
Each unit versus...
Excuse me, I thought you meant she had to do it. That's what I thought you meant.
No, it should be the owner of the property that does it.
Yeah, I was misjudging him.
And then each tenant takes their little space and says, okay, this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to put a sign on the front of the building. I'm going to put the directory sign out front. The facade signs are different. Rick?
No, I don't know how you call this out.
So is the general consensus that she needs to file some sort of application with a plan, and then we can look at waivers?
Typically, what we do is we have somebody request a waiver of site plan, full site plan, and we take a look at the site plan and make sure that their application fits within that site plan, and then we grant it based on, you know, if, if there's four units in there and two are rented now, and they're using five spaces, and she's going to use five, and there's 30 spaces, then, you know, that's, that's adequate.
Okay.
If she's going to use more spaces than they have, then we have to kind of look at reconfiguring that, but typically, that's, that's what we do, and there is a site plan for every building that goes up, so, you know, he came in and originally said this is going to be for rent, so it was kind of designed for, you know, X number of people to use the parking spaces per, per unit, if you want.
Do you follow what we're kind of looking for? Paul should have that plan.
We have it in the office.
If you have it in the office, then someone's going to have to take the initiative to take that plan, and you can just tell us what you're going to do. The other requirements, you know, I think that they should be, he might have met all the requirements, but in your particular case, we'd waive any other additional requirements, because you're really not doing much.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's basically storage for us.
Okay, but you are going to have some signs.
If we could, yes. We would like to have a sign just for identification purposes, but...
You can reach out to Joanne and see what they have on file.
Okay.
If that is adequate, then I think that we can use that.
Could be, yeah.
We just need to know where you're going to be, so we're not going to draw them in on the plan where you're going to be. So whoever that engineer would be, or give us a letter saying that if he's got it marked Bay 1, 2, 3, 4, that you're going to be in there, so you don't have to get involved in any engineering, but just give us something that shows us where you're going to be and what you're going to do.
Okay.
And I think the board will be, will file it.
Well, can we ask for the site plan to be given to us at our next meeting?
We can. I mean, you want to proceed, so the sooner you get your application in. I think one other question is, too, is do you want to have a hearing on this? Because I think one of the emails indicated that you're going to have to have a hearing. You got to, it had to be submitted by a certain time. But not having a site plan, I really can't tell you.
Did we do that for the painter that went in?
We've never had hearings for site plans for people, you know, coming in. The hearing is for the site plan when it originally starts. Then the, the use of that site plan, we take a look at that, and as long as it's what that was designed for, then that goes forward. As far as the signs go, you know, we need a location on the site plan showing where the sign is going to be, and the requirement is for you to meet the zoning requirements for signs.
Right, but with me not owning the property, that would have to come from him.
Correct. So we need to have a location where the sign is, a description of how big the sign is, and that you have to meet the zoning requirements for that, and then you typically bring in, show us a picture of what the sign's going to look like.
Okay.
That's usually it. But you have to go to the building inspector for the permit for the sign, and you have to meet all that zone.
Okay.
So I guess you are going to need some sort of a plan. If the plan is on record, then I don't see why we really couldn't use that.
Okay. So it's finding out from him as far as contacting the office and making sure that you guys have a copy of the site plan?
A copy of the site, I know we have a copy of the site plan, but what we would need is a, is something from the owner showing, you know, somebody's already has Unit 1, and they're doing this. Somebody already has Unit 2, they're doing this. Now you're adding this on, and we take a look at, well, you're adding to that.
Okay.
So it's like the composite of the whole thing is what we're looking for.
Okay.
But you would need some input from the owner as to, you know, where's he going to allow you to put a sign? Is he going to allow that? That type of thing. And is that sign going to be for everybody, or, you know, is everybody going to work in this area? These two posts that you put your sign in? That type of thing.
Yeah, like, from very beginning, and this has been a lengthy process, just trying to get in there, but he was the one that originally had stated that it would just be a small sign out front that would identify each one of the bays as far as what they were, just something small.
Yep.
Street side. So that's kind of what we were going with, but nothing has been put up yet, so we aren't sure.
Because we typically look at where the sign is, because we want to see if it's going to obstruct you, or that type of thing.
And how the sign is lighted. But I did tell Paula that you'd need a plan.
Okay.
So just, you know, check at the office and see what we have, and then that would have to be upgraded just to include where you're going to be, be one.
Now, is there going to be an issue as far as occupying the space without a sign?
The sign, we're not, we're not the same people.
Right.
Okay, on the site plan, we need to know.
What I'm thinking is, as far as us being able to occupy the space so that we can move our stuff in and start using it as storage for materials, is that going to be an issue?
You don't need a sign to have a business.
No.
Right.
If you don't put a sign up, you know, yeah, I'm going to tell you, I personally don't have a problem with moving your stuff in, as long as you're going to go through the process so that we know who's there and who isn't there. You can check with the rest of the board. I mean, we're not taking any action, and I know you've been trying hard to, to get in it.
Five months.
I, I don't think there's anything, there's nothing in front of us that we're going to vote on, but I think the general consensus is, I personally don't have an issue with them moving in temporarily, especially as long as you're going to go through the process.
Okay.
Rick?
No, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. Mr. Puckett.
That's me.
Yes. Unfortunately...
Unfortunately?
No, yeah, we've got a few minutes.
Okay.
All right, but we have a break at 6:30.
Okay.
For our public hearing. 7:30 for that public hearing.
Okay.
Come up to the speaker, if you don't mind. Identify yourself for the record. Charlie, you might open the doors, get some wind?
Sure, I can do that. Just get your mosquito and kill it out.
John Puckett, and reference 21-Pastor Lane.
You can take your mask off.
Perfect.
Okay, Gordon and I received your emails. I don't know if any of the board members...
I made copies of it. I don't know if you guys want me to hand it out, so if you have it, or...
Well, but I, you can pass them out, that's fine. Just, just give them to me, and I'll pass them out.
Yeah, this is, there's three different things. One's the report by Amory Engineers, one's a copy of the bylaws as far as what's required for asphalt, and then one's the engineers' answer.
Okay, well, I can, I can, I'm going to pass them out. We're not going to review them.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. What I'd like to have you do is just tell us who you are, what you're anticipating, and then we'll figure out... How many of these?
Uh, there's six, but you only need five or four of them up there, so there's six copies. It's three different items.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
So we're the owner of 1-Pastor Lane. We just purchased that lot from the original developer, who had basically asked us to come in and finish the road in exchange for the lot, and that's something we had kind of, probably, it was about two months ago, Gordon, we met.
Yeah.
Yeah, about two months ago, we met with Gordon out there and met with the engineer to kind of walk through. We kind of come up with a plan on what was feasible as far as doing the repairs on his list of items that he had. And basically, the, there's one item there that was the sticking point that made it financially feasible for us to do, which was the second lift of binder. Right now, the road is bindered. It's been that way for the last 15 years. There's one lift of binder, and the bylaws require, you know, two lifts total, one lift of binder, one lift at the top. The original plans actually show three lifts of binder, but that was the, the sticking point as far as where we could make it financially viable for us to come in and do the work in exchange for the lot. You know, and now, like I said, that's where we're kind of coming before you guys, and we've been getting some strange pushback, because I know that there's, there's definitely, it seems like there's some people in town that don't want to see the lot built on, because the potential buyer went to the billing department, and they said, the billing department, they said, no, the block's not buildable. So we're kind of in a position where we're stuck, because, I mean, well, I'm not going to do the work if we can't build on it, and we'll, you know, I'll have to kick it back to Mike at that point and kind of say, well, you know, we're really not interested in going and doing all the repairs, and then finding out we can't do anything with it. And that's kind of, you know, where the whole thing's kind of standing right now, and, you know, it's kind of helped us as far as to come up with a, you know, some type of plan. I can do every repair that Amory Engineer requested, except for the second lift of asphalt, which would be, you know, which would give you a total of 300. which would be, you know, which would give you a total of three different... three inch and a half lifts of asphalt. We're willing to do two total lifts of asphalt.
Okay. As far as the building, the lot itself, I mean, that's beyond that jurisdiction.
But it's all gonna tie together.
Correct, that's fine.
Yeah.
We don't have any control over whether the lot is built or not.
Yeah. No, I totally understand that, but it just seems that when we first kinda started talking with you with the billing department, everybody was kind of on board. But I don't know, like I said, if it's a situation where it's even like, it seems like it's gonna be a fight, I'll be honest with you, we're not interested. You know, if everybody's kinda not on board and with, hey, you know, they've sat for 15 years, we're willing to do the work, but I'm not gonna fight with the town to build on it afterwards. And I understand it's not a fight with you, but it's just in the general consensus, that all has to be straightened up now before we even get started.
Gordon and I are familiar with emails.
Yeah.
The other two members on.
Yeah.
And I sent you an email back.
Yeah, and we got a late start on this, 'cause I didn't even know that we were gonna have to come to a meeting or anything like that.
That's okay. My only concern, but there's kinda confusion, is that I read the 2018 report from Amory.
Yep.
And then you guys have discussed something that looks a little bit different.
Yep.
So for myself, I just wanna make sure exactly what was and was not gonna be done.
Yeah.
And also ask that the Highway Department be involved, because what you don't wanna do is if you skip that inch and find it, it's in the original plan.
Correct.
And the road's not accepted somewhere down the pike.
Right.
So ultimately, you know, I think we've got complaints down there. I've been on-site to look at it. The best thing for the town would be to get fixed.
Yeah.
Whether or not, and Gordon can answer this better than I, if the original plan called for three lifts, can we amend that plan to make sure or can... will the town accept this four or five years down the road?
Okay.
That's my only concern.
No, I'm totally...
It appeared that the rest of the work will be done and hasn't been done, so... and I'll defer to Gordon, because he spoke with you.
I mean, what we're looking for is to get the road in according to our specs. And that's why we have Amory on board.
Will his proposal fit into our specs?
Yep.
I would... no, these guys should have some time to review it. I think, as I said in my email, that I would suggest that you give us exactly what is going to be done versus what's supposed to be done.
Yep.
I'm not sure that you have any other hearings. I do want you to touch base with Highway Department.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I wanna make sure that three years down the road, when this thing is gonna be accepted, then there's a punch list a mile long.
Right.
There was a question on a telephone pole. I've been there, but I didn't notice anything. What's the issue with the pole?
It's where the sidewalk is supposed to go up with the radius, there's a pole in the way. I think that could be amended, shortened, whatever. There was no sidewalk on Hudson Street right now, so...
Okay, that's fine. So, I mean, I can just speak for myself, and I think Gordon's kind of in agreement. We'd like to get it done.
Yeah, us too.
So we'll work with you as far as getting it done. I wouldn't ask these other members to consider it until they've gone through the 18 pages of his report and photographs.
Yeah, the process is pretty extensive.
And then we still don't have what you wanna do.
Right.
So you need to get that to us, you know, for our next meeting.
Yeah, and I will, yeah. It's literally just one... there's only one thing on his entire list that won't happen, and that's just the second of the binder.
Okay. Well, it was kinda confusing.
Yeah.
Because the list was... it was two pages.
Right, right, yeah. So I'll send an email, you know, to everybody, everybody's email, and make sure that we touch base and get it over to the Highway Department too, for them to kinda take it down.
Yeah, if you send it to the office, she'll disseminate it.
Yeah, but I mean, we are gonna be... I mean, at this point too, 'cause I'm getting a little squeamish, to be honest with you, because when the buyer goes down and the buildup department says, no, we're not gonna let you build on it, this might all be for naught.
Okay.
So we might have to come up with some type of plan as far as... I want some type of insurance from them, from the building department. They're gonna issue the permit, but you guys sign off on it, 'cause you guys signing off on it doesn't really do me any good if they don't.
Okay. You gotta work that out with them.
Yeah.
My suggestion is you ask for determination out of the building.
Yeah, we did. We actually did. We requested a letter of buildability from them and, you know, that same type of thing, which is like, like I said, it's just if there's... if there is... if people don't wanna see it happen, I'm fine with that, but it's just like I said, we're gonna kinda... that all has to kinda come to a head before we put a shovel in there.
Yeah. I don't really wanna get involved in whether or not you get a building permit or not.
No, I understand that.
It sounds like if there is some sort of a determination, then you always get the Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
To go to.
Right.
They're the final authority on whatever the issue might be.
Right. They're not gonna let us sign off... they're not gonna let us apply until the point where you guys sign off and release it.
Well, you... I mean, you get us what we need.
Yeah.
And give the folks the opportunity to review all the documents and what you're proposing.
Yep.
And we'll have Highway here.
Yep.
And I would get on the agenda for our next meeting.
Perfect.
Anybody got any comments?
Should we send what he has to Amory so that we can make sure it's okay with them?
Amory sent it to us.
Oh, no, I mean what he has.
Oh, yeah, as soon as you get us something.
They already responded, yeah. That's right there too. They responded, they were fine with it.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm coming in late too. Like, I wanna kinda make sure everybody had it in advance, but like I said, I found out three days ago that we were even on the agenda for this, so...
Okay.
I'll make sure that everybody has copies, but we had back and forth with Amory as far as what was going on with it, and they were in agreement as far as eliminating that one lift of binder. They were fine with that, so... and they responded to that in writing too, so...
So just make sure you send it to the office and let her disseminate, because some of us have...
I'll send it to the office.
Send it to the office, let her send it around, because we've got situations where they've got us different emails, so she knows the correct email.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Hold on a second. All right, and you all set?
Yeah, that's all... that's all I'm here with.
We have someone with a handup.
Yeah, um, my name's Tina Kenyon, resident of...
Do you mind coming to the microphone?
Yep, I'm a resident of Paster Lane. First of all, I wanna know how this got sold, when there was a covenant, it was sold once, and it's supposed to be going back to Russell Mills estate. According to public record, it is back to Russell Mills, and now I'm finding out in the planning board meeting, it's been sold again. How is this happening? I just want my road finished, and this is... something's going on here that is getting sold and not recorded.
I'm just gonna stop you a second. Did anybody have a chance to read your email?
Yes.
Did I... get a chance to read her email? It was a very lengthy email.
It was, 'cause I've been dealing with this for 13 years.
And I understand that, and I can tell from the frustration.
Because it just keeps getting kicked down the road, kicked down the road.
Unfortunately, things like this happen with sub...
But they don't if people do their jobs.
Let me just finish, ma'am, okay? And you got a gentleman that's here that's willing to do that. So we read your email, we'll make sure he gets a copy of it, and I understand your frustration, and I think the board, the general consensus is the board is gonna try to work with him so we can get that road finished.
And that's great, but I'd like to know why was the land sold when there's a covenant restriction on it?
We can't... he probably, and I have not looked at the covenant, but I'm gonna say that that covenant would probably prohibit him from getting the building permit. You can sell a land 27... that I don't know.
I do, because I've done this since 13 years.
Then if you know, then there's no reason for you to ask me. What I'm saying is, we're gonna do the best that we can to try to get the road finished. And I did review all the history, and I was out there on-site, so I saw some of the things that Amory saw, the detention basins, the covers that weren't correct. I saw the road breaking up. Gordon had been out there, so we're gonna do everything we can, I think as a board, to try to get the road finished.
Absolutely.
I just wanna know how legally in a town that has a covenant restriction, a lot of land can be sold? If it's not been recorded at the registry of deeds, then the town is not recording something properly. I'm thankful that you finished this. It is sort of buildable, because we've already done this seven years ago.
Ma'am? Ma'am, you wanna address through the chairman, please?
Um...
Okay.
It's sort of buildable. You're gonna have to twist and turn the house. It's not the house that you have listed on MLS. That's not what can be built, because we've already done this seven years ago, when Russell Mills Pond did this once before to stop. So the homeowners on the street and I are ready to file suit with the town, because you guys keep kicking this down to the road. Every single time, much like this gentleman over here, someone doesn't show up, okay, we'll have them at the next meeting. We'll have them at the next meeting. This is the 10th meeting I've come to. In the last seven months, we've had numerous things sent from Mr. Mayo, telling Russell Mills Pond that he had to get this done or the town would be suing him. And now we did it, so we're just gonna kick it down the road. We're gonna let it be sold, and I wanna know why in this town it's not being reported with a covenant. Why now, on the 26th of June, it showed it was changed hands again, but it was changed hands back to Russell Mills, when that's not actually who owns it? Why is that happening?
I can't answer the question.
Well, who can?
I'll ask any of the board members. Just ask them, that have been longer than I have, if they can answer that question.
And they know my frustration too, because they've seen me calling documents after documents.
Gordon, okay, let me just ask the question. Gordon, can you answer any of those questions quickly?
I still don't know how they transferred. I don't know if Larry Mayo has looked at the deed.
So do I get counsel involved to figure out how to transfer again in this town?
The covenant is still on the law.
Right, but the covenant required the road be finished, and then 24 months, first transfer, which is the 22nd of December 2017. We are now at 2020. The covenant has passed. The town is dropping the law. We are... we're almost a year past the covenant, and the original owner has done nothing. It's not this gentleman's job to do a third hope, it's the original owner, not this gentleman. Even when it transfers, it's still the original owner.
Okay, team?
So my thought process on this is, we have him that he will finish, so we're gonna sort that all out. That would help. I think that probably you should help him figure out why that lot is being told to... you said you had a buyer going there? Not buildable? That would be my question.
Yeah, I have a buyer, yeah. From the building department. And it was pushed out honestly.
It's twisted. We're locked in the shape of it.
But that doesn't make it not buildable.
It's buildable, but not probably doesn't have an MLS.
Okay, but that's separate. So he went... somebody went into the building department, is what I understand you said?
Correct.
And said, and they told him it wasn't... or her, it wasn't buildable.
They told him... they told the potential buyer that there was a change in zoning since the original lot was broken up, and there's a change in the zoning. The lot is no longer...
Which is gonna be the kink in all of this, so I would probably straighten out that and let's help him get forward so that your road can get finished.
I would love to, but in turn, I wanna know what department I go to to figure out why the public record is incorrect and why this is changing hands without it being recorded in public record.
I'm just gonna comment, I'm just gonna... Rick, any comments?
No, this is all new to me.
Yeah, I mean, it's new to me, but we're not the... we don't own the property. They own the property, so it's not a town issue until...
It is a town issue.
Until the town accepts that as a roadway, then it becomes a town issue.
It's an accepted road.
Okay, you gonna let me finish? Okay. It's not an accepted road, it's a private way. So you can agree to disagree.
It's on...
We don't have...
It's on the minutes from the higher meetings.
Okay. Anything else?
I just wanna know what department I need to go to.
I don't have an answer for you, unless one of the other board members has an answer.
I think that the best solution is to help figure out why that lot is not buildable and make sure that it can be, so that he'll finish the road, build a house, and everybody lives happily ever after.
That would be wonderful.
So I think that would be the team to go.
And my suggestion, if there was a change in zoning, then you should have some sort of protection. So that would mean that if that permit was denied at the building level, then you'd go to the Board of Appeals, and...
Yeah, I don't even know... I mean, I... we're kinda like, we're saying the same thing on their town. We'll have to kinda play it for the cases. I don't know if they'll let me do that, and so you guys, at least, if I even apply it.
Okay, all right. Well, you need to bring that to us and we'll...
I'll get all the details that I can, I'll put everything together. I'll spell exactly what we're planning on doing and what we aren't planning on doing.
And we'll try to work with you, and Ms. Kenyon will try to work to make sure that the road is finished, but we don't have the answers to those legal questions.
Who do I go to?
I have no idea. We're not the owners of the property. This gentleman is the owner of the property. I have no idea. We're not the owners of the property. This gentleman is the owner of the property.
I know you're not the owners of the property, but my question is, as a town member, this was sold again when there was a covenant on it. I'm very happy that you have the land. I would love to see this street finished so my children don't fall in a hole again. But the problem is, why is this getting kicked down the road and down the road and down the road? Why am I 13 years later still standing here asking for a road to be finished?
And I'm gonna answer for the last time. I don't have an answer. This board doesn't have an answer.
Who should I go to to find an answer?
I can't, I don't, I can't advise you that. I have no idea.
Okay.
I can inquire with town council to see if I can obtain an answer for you.
If you could do that, that would be fantastic because I would really like to know. Because what I'm nervous about is this is gonna get out of control again because now we're three people removed.
Okay, okay. All right.
Thanks.
Point taken. Thank you. I think we have a couple of minutes before our public hearing. We have two. Is there anything else in discussion? Comprehensive permit is gonna be postponed till September 2nd. If you wanna take a minute, we're gonna read that into the record and then that'll give you, give us time to go to our meeting. That letter from the Attorney General's.
Okay, the letter from the Attorney General's office. This office received a complaint from Charlie Seelig on February 24th, 2020, alleging that the Halifax Planning Board, the board violated the open meeting law 30A-1825. Complaint was originally filed with the board on January 15th, 2020, and he responded on behalf of the board by letter dated March 10th, 2020. The complaint alleges that a quorum of the board improperly deliberated by email. We appreciate the patience of the parties while we review this matter. Following our review, we find that the board violated the open meeting law in the way alleged. In reaching this determination, we have reviewed the complaint, the board response, the request for further review filed with our office in the minutes of the board's September 19th, 2019 meeting. We find the facts as following. The board is a six-member public board. Thus, four members constitutes a quorum. On September 19th, 2019, the board held a public hearing regarding site plan modification for a manor estate, a 12-unit multifamily condo complex on Elm Street in the town of Halifax. Prior to the board's discussion on this topic, board member Mark Meilius announced that he had been asked to recuse himself from the discussion because of a potential conflict. The board discussed whether to continue the hearing until after Mark Meilius received a determination from the State Ethics Commission on a potential conflict of interest. The board member Amy Troop inquired why the board did not receive copies of the request from Mr. Meilius recusal and Theresa Renaud, former administrative assistant for the board, informed her that the document was only for Mr. Meilius. The board ultimately decided to continue the hearing to September 25th, 2019. On December 20th, 2019, Ms. Troop sent an email to the entire board seeking information on the request for Mark, for Mr. Meilius' recusal during the September 19th meeting. Specifically, her email reads in part as follows. "The minutes of the September 19th meeting state that we are not to get a copy of the recusal requested from Mark. Please explain why, when my, please explain when I was asked to be recused, everyone on the board received a copy of that. I can prove the emails that this happened." Ms. Troop's emails further asked why no action had been taken concerning her complaint against Ms. Renaud, specifically stating, "I want something to be done. It was absolutely out of line." "To be called a know-it-all while asking tons of questions to make sure that I was aware of the consequences of my vote is quite interesting." Finally, Ms. Troop requested a copy of the letter that was distributed by the board members as part of the December 19th packet and stated that failing to provide such a letter was against the open meeting law. The same day, Board Chairman Gordon Andrews responded to Ms. Troop's email and copied the entire board. His email stated that he was looking into Ms. Troop's complaint against Ms. Renaud. Specifically, he stated, "After checking on things, I believe the complaint should have been handled by the department head of which would be the chairman of the planning board." So I'm looking into the reason why this did not, why this was not being done properly. "The meeting law was enacted to eliminate such, to eliminate much of the secrecy surrounding deliberations and discussions on which public policy is based."
Tigglyon.
Who's it?
Tigglyon.
Tigglyon versus School Board of Sturbridge, 376 Mass. 70-72, 1978. Except in an emergency, a public body shall post notice of every meeting at least 48 hours prior to such a meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20-B. A meeting is defined by a deliberation of a public body by respect to any matter within the body's jurisdiction. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18. The law defines deliberation as an oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic mail, between or among quorum of the public body on the public business within its jurisdiction, provided, however, that the deliberation shall not include the distribution of other procedural meeting or distribute reports or documents that may be discussed at a meeting, provided that no opinion of the member is expressed, i.e., for purpose of open meeting law, a quorum is generally a simple majority of the members of the board of the public body. The complaint alleges that a quorum of the board improperly deliberated by email when Ms. Troop emailed the entire board on December 20th, 2019, and Mr. Andrews then responded, "The board acknowledged that the emails constitute communication between a quorum of the board outside of the notice of the meeting on matters of which the jurisdiction of the board. We agree and find that Ms. Troop's email, Mr. Andrews' response violate the open meeting law where the communications involve the quorum of the board and discuss matters that were pending before the board and within its jurisdiction or involved in the operation of the board, which is a public business within the body's jurisdiction." See OML 2016-104, OML 2015-3, OML 2014-108. "We commend the board for acknowledging its error and committing to ensure future compliance. We do not find a portion of Ms. Troop's email in which she had requested a copy of the letter to be improper deliberation. Deliberation does not include the distribution of reports or documents that may be discussed at a meeting, provided that no opinion of the board is expressed." See General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, OML 215-69. Moreover, we do not find that the statement in the email that failing to provide copy of the letter was against an open meeting law. To be deliberations, as we will not find a violation of the open meeting law where public body members attempt to warn another public body member against violating open meeting law. See OML 2018-6. Conclusion, for the reasons stated above, we find that a quorum of the board or open meeting law, by deliberating via email, we order the board immediately and future compliance within the law requirements and caution for similar violations may be considered evidence of intent to violate the law. In addition, we order the board to publicly release December 20th, 2019 emails within 60 days of receiving the determination, if it has not already been done. The board may publicly read the emails by, release the emails by reading them and their content during the meeting and listing them as emails on the meeting minutes, or by referencing the emails during the meeting, posting the emails along with the minutes of the municipal website. We now consider the complaint addressed and by this determination to be resolved. This determination does not address any other complaints that might be pending with our office or the board. Please feel free to contact our office. The telephone number, if you have any questions regarding this letter.
For those in the audience, there was an open meeting complaint filed. That's the determination. They usually suggest the determination be read at an open meeting. I'm gonna be looking for a motion to release or put in on minutes that those emails on that specific date. And that should bring those members or the members of the board into full compliance and the issue should be resolved. So I'm looking for a motion to have...
I make a motion to release the emails dated 2020, December 20th, 2019.
You want them released or you want them added to?
Released and added to our minutes.
Okay, I'm looking for a second.
One second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that matter is resolved. It now being 7:38, I'm gonna look for a motion to open up a continued public hearing on the zoning bylaw change. Could I ask one thing? That, we're only limited to 20 people. I do want people to come to the mic to speak so they can be heard and recognized. Just give us your name. And I think we're okay with 20 people. All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I think there's like 25 of us. Can we say it's?
Well, 25 and then you gotta, so, okay. I'm looking for a motion to go into public hearing.
Make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second?
For the open, for the bylaw changes.
Second, second. I need to take a roll call vote. Amy?
Aye, yes.
Gordon?
Aye.
Rick? Okay, Alan, aye. We are open to the zoning bylaw hearing. I just wanna make point that in the back on the cabinet, there is a copy of the proposed zoning bylaw. And I am hoping in a minute that our town council, Ms. Amy Questle, will take a minute to review the changes that were made and then we'll take any questions. Amy, you're up. Then you don't, you don't have to wear the mask if you don't want...
Sorry, it's just counting.
Yeah.
You're fine now. You scared people away. So, Mr. Chairman, Amy Questle of Andrew's Council for the town of Halifax. And we worked on these, we worked on the revisions to the multifamily development zoning bylaw for approximately, probably at least nine months. We had, I wanna say we had about four or five public hearings on member meetings where we met with different groups. The result is that we have a brand-new section for multifamily developments and we have, we have completely deleted, we're proposing to delete the current section. We have, we start with general requirements and then we are allowing, for a single structure, a single structure can only be two units, so it can only be a two-family house. That's the limit on that. When we have multiple, when we have multiple buildings on one lot, we're only, we're limiting those to four units. And with regard to that, when we have, when we have, the more units that you have, the more property, the more land you have to supply. So if you have two dwelling units, you have to have 8,000, 80,000 square feet. Three dwelling units, you have to have 120,000 square feet. Four dwelling units, you have to have 160,000 square feet. The zoning, the bylaw that we came up with is, it's a pretty, it's standard, it's a standard multifamily development bylaw. However, we did tweak it in one way, which is that the multifamily development has to provide a concept plan which depicts exclusive use areas for each dwelling and that allows the Board of Appeals to determine that adequate land exists for the use and enjoyment of residents. And so, and we've proposed that those exclusive use areas be depicted as dash lines on a plan. This was, this was, I think, I think strongly supported by everybody that worked on this. And then the other, the other thing is that the, we've increased the, we've increased frontage for the multifamily development and we've also provided a buffer. So there has to be a buffer around the multifamily development and other, you know, abutting properties that exist. And I think that's it. I guess I just wanna again point out that the most, the maximum number of dwelling units can be four and that's it.
I just wanna point out a couple of things. You did mention the fact that the multifamily development would be buffered. You did make provisions in there on the construction of the internal drive in the event that the project, chances out project will not have any accepted streets. So you did build in some protection to make sure that that internal drive or that roadway would be built to subdivision control standards.
Correct.
Things like no parking on that internal drive. And I think in the, in the text of this, through a little bit of debate, you made a determination on how many parking spots per, per unit or the minimum.
Correct.
I don't think there's a maximum. You've also handled or covered the exterior lighting. Would be no flood lighting.
So the relief required for this is a special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals. However, the zoning Board of Appeals cannot act on the special permit until site plan has been conducted by the planning board. And so at that time is when the roadway, the internal drive, will be determined to meet subdivision because that's within the planning board's purview. So it doesn't make sense for the zoning board to have to figure that out. It makes more sense for the planning board to do that because that's what you guys do.
But when you say subdivision, it's gonna meet subdivision standards. It's not gonna be a subdivision.
No, it's not gonna be a subdivision. It will be an internal drive. It will not be accepted by the town, so they'll have to provide their own trash and things like that.
Can I open it to the board first if they got any questions? Of Amy. Amy, do you have any questions? For Amy Questle?
So this appears to be, I'm just trying to go through all of this. I need a minute.
Gordon?
Yeah, you said that this must go to the planning board for site plan first?
Yes.
Yes, there's a, there's a timeframe that goes, and the planning board must act on it within 45 days.
Right, which is standard for a site plan.
And whatever that site plan is, that's, that's the law of the land?
So under, under general requirements, under D, there's certain requirements that they have to, that they have to meet. And D, 3A is site plan approval has been obtained and comments from the planning board have been received or said 40, 40 days have elapsed, generous.
So could you kind of run through what the scenario would be for somebody to apply for that?
So, so... So each lot, it's under D3. Each lot containing a two-family structure, multifamily dwelling, or multifamily development must have access to drainage utilities functioning, functionally equivalent to that provided under the Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations. So the zoning Board of Appeals shall refer the special permit application to the planning board for written comments and recommendations within seven days of receipt. Planning board shall acknowledge the written site plan approval required under subsection 2 above or make additional written recommendations and comments and send copies thereof to the zoning Board of Appeals and the applicant within 40 days of receipt of the referral request by the zoning Board of Appeals. So site plan approval is, it says that site plan approval must be obtained prior to the grant of a special permit pursuant to this section. So I think that we would go to the, to the site plan review section to see how far in advance they can get their site plan because they wouldn't be acting on the site plan without the special permit. So I wouldn't assume that they would go too far ahead. But then, the planning board then has another, so they get site plan, then they apply to the zoning board for site, for a special permit and then that application then goes out for comment. And the planning board then will either submit, you know, a comment saying they have site plan approval and here it is, or they have site plan approval and here it is, and we also have further comments which are X, Y, Z.
Because what you're saying is they apply to the zoning board first.
No.
And the zoning board has seven days to turn over to the, to the planning board.
I did it backwards. The paragraph above, I was just trying, I was just trying to point out that you guys have, you guys are gonna look at it twice.
No, no, I understand, but I'm saying for the general public to understand, where does it go? First, second, third?
So it says site plan approval must be obtained prior to the grant.
Which section you want just so?
On D2.
So D2, in, out in the pamphlet.
So there's all the definitions. It's on that page. It's underneath. And it says, "Site plan approval must be obtained prior to the grant of a special permit pursuant to this section." And then the planning board edits sole discretion.
Amy, can I just stop you for a second?
Yep.
You said D2. I had D as multifamily development, 2 being...
Oh, B, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, B2.
B is in Boston?
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody can follow. Okay, okay.
B2, singles, it starts with single structure and then, so it says that the planning board at sole discretion and in accordance with rules and regulations may engage a peer-reviewed consultant to review any site plan application filed pursuant to this section. So that's one filing. They do a filing with the planning board. Then they have to, in order to file with the zoning board, they have to have, site plan approval has to be obtained. But when they file with the zoning board, the zoning board then sends the application out for comment.
So first, it comes to the planning board for site approval. So that should probably be written in there, like, planning board, like, make A so that nobody can get confused.
It says site plan approval must be obtained prior to the grant of a special permit pursuant to this section.
Oh, all right, but A, B, and, A and B down here, I think the site plan approval, that A, so B3A?
Just so the audience knows where I am.
B, that's what I was just saying. B3A.
B3A.
Yep, the site plan approval. We should probably be very clear there so that there's not like any gray area like, you know, you say that our bylaws have now, that says again at A where the site plan approval has to come from so there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it.
Okay, under A...
You know what I'm saying?
It says site approval has to be obtained.
Bye, and just to be clear, because you know how there's like a lot of gray areas and confusion? That could, that could create confusion and a loophole.
So if you go to, if you go to site plan approval, under your bylaw...
6723?
28. It says that, it's the planning board. It says that the site plan bearing, there is an approval by the planning board. So it's right there. That is clear. The planning board is the only board that can, that can grant site plan approval.
Okay, well, it wouldn't hurt to add that in, just to be clear.
Unfortunately, I don't believe at this point you can make editorial changes.
No, we can.
Okay, we'll have to clarify that. I don't see a problem with the language, but let's go to the, let's go to the next set of comments and then we can discuss each comment as we go along. Gordon, you got something else?
Uh, no, not right now.
Rick, did you have any, any comments?
No.
Okay. I think basically what you're saying is the planning board's gonna have two bites at this apple.
That's the way that I read it.
Okay, as long as, because once you do a concept plan, I just wanna be clear. Planning board doesn't necessarily make the decision on concept, concept plan. That concept plan is gonna have your open space, your parking areas, your undisturbed areas, okay? And then the plan is gonna be submitted, which is gonna have all the drawings. These drawings, as submitted, will be on lots or they'll be 100, they'll be, from the internal drive, okay? There's gonna be setback requirements, 50, 150, so that'll all be addressed. Parking will all be addressed. Once that's approved by the planning board, if the zoning Board of Appeals has some additional information, then we can then in fact respond to them.
Correct.
If the board has no other questions, I would open it up to the public. If anybody's got any questions, I would just ask that they come to the mic. Go ahead. Andrews? And if you just let us know which section you got a question on.
I just wanna make a statement.
Okay. Okay.
My name is Joanne Andrews, I live at 688 Flumest Street, Halifax. I fail to understand why the town and this board believes that this is the right time to hold this hearing on these proposed bylaws while under COVID-19. There's 24 people here. My office address, I have seen this. I have to go to surgery. I may not be able to go to a town hall meeting and speak my piece. This is the only shot I got. I'm looking forward to three surgeries, and maybe more. So this is my one shot. So you're already in violation. You've got 24 people here. Right?
We've got 20, we've got 20.
Right, but, by mistake, no mistake. All right, we have, also we have a Zoom meeting going on right now about our schools. Some of us would rather be listening to the Zoom meeting because our grandchildren are involved. What are they coming to? It's COVID-19, let's face it. I don't believe the developers are more important than the residents, and I think this board by doing this bylaw is putting the developers more out there than we are. Why aren't you guys thinking about us? We're the residents. I believe these bylaws should be withdrawn, and there should be another time when it's not COVID, and when you can have more people come to this, to a board meeting. I don't understand why. I really don't. You have the same time as a school meeting. So you either choose your child or you choose development. I don't understand why, you know, I don't understand why the town is pushing for these bylaws under this situation. I think we ought to wait until a time that everybody can assemble and everybody has a chance to speak. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has any questions? Identify yourself for the record.
David Masiello, 1610th Ave. So I have a few things I want to say, and I'll get to each one individually. First of all, Mrs. Andrews actually stepped in and said something that I believe she's, she's absolutely correct about. There's not enough people that can come here to, to judge this for the town. This isn't, this isn't a way to do this. I understand the urgency for it and what needs to be done and the anomaly of the COVID virus, but at the same time, the town needs to be able to have the opportunity to be, be here and speak in a group setting where more people in this town aren't scared to come out and do this. So I don't mean to step on what you said, but I understand that. The septic system, so for 310 CMR Title V, what are we doing for septic for these multifamily units? What's going to happen? Does each unit have their own septic? Each one of them have their Title V as a joint system? I just need to know as a resident, I'm trying to understand because at some point or another, we're going to keep adjusting these, these things that are going to happen, these bylaws, and next thing you know, we're going to have a two-family house next to every house in town? Are we going to just keep changing these bylaws so that a two-family pops up next to my house and the neighborhood starts to get inundated with more people? We've already got situations with the schools having overpopulation with the kids. We're filling things up, we're going to just keep adding stuff up. So where are we going to go with all this, if you can follow a lot of these? And this is some of the things that some of the town members need to be able to understand, not just 25 people. Do you understand what I'm saying? Is this, is this an invalid point? Am I making an ass of myself? Because realistically, realistically, I brought my kids to this town for the small-town aspect and not for it to grow over what it is. We don't need to build more. We need to settle out where we're at, figure out where we're going to go with the kids that are, there's going to be more kids coming, and on top of it, potentially at this point, Halifax is going to be full in-person school for the kids. So we're looking at that, you know? There's parents that are freaking out about a lot of this stuff, and, you know, with, with the anomaly of COVID, we don't have enough people here to, to judge this.
Okay, you done? I would just address the septic system issue, whether it's multifamily, single-family, whatever it is, all the, all the septic systems would have to be Title V compliant. If you're using a multiple-family dwelling, from a Board of Health standpoint, each unit has to have its own separate tank, and then they could potentially go out to one main reaching field. That's why 310 CMR, that section is in there.
Greg, I would read some of that briefly.
And Mr. Chairman, they have to submit a approval from the Board of Health with their application, so they have to get the septic system approval by the Board of Health before the, not, before the special permit can be granted.
Okay. I don't know if there's any language in there that the, there'll be a concept plan that might go to the planning board, but are the septic system plans going to be submitted prior to site plan approval? I would say yes, because they're not going to change them afterwards. So the first step of the process would probably have to be Board of Health. Second step would be Planning Board and then Board of Appeals. Do we have any other comments? Just identify yourself, please.
I have a question. Also, I agree with the last few people who are up here. I have two children in the school system, and I'm choosing to be here and trust the school committee because I trust them more than I trust you guys. My question is, can there be, originally in a couple of these meetings, there were two units per building. This looks like there could be more than two units per building. We were talking about duplexes and having just two per each building. Is that true? How many can we have per each building?
Based on my recollection, any impression, if I'm wrong, if you've got one contiguous building, the most you can have, I think, is eight bedrooms, and it's going to be 160,000 square feet.
Correct, upland, contiguous upland.
So how many households could that be?
Four.
So we can have buildings with four houses?
Four, five units, you can have four families in that unit.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is there a plan?
Just identify yourself.
Is there a plan for the schools? Because our buses are already at three children per seat, which is above capacity. So if we're going to have four family houses now coming off, how are we going to afford these buses that we can't even afford now?
We don't know that we're having any more development in town. I don't know how much land is left for development. Unfortunately, we have a bylaw that's been very problematic, and this is the solution to simplify that bylaw to correct it. There's been a lot of litigation, a lot of discussion on this bylaw. A lot of the board members sat in on all these meetings to try to come up with a general consensus as how we can have a multifamily development bylaw that would be suitable for the town to avoid all this litigation. We don't know that anybody's coming to town to build anything. I can assure you though, that when they do come, they will have to come in front of multiple boards in order to accomplish that. I don't know if any of the board members got a comment on that, or if they don't, go to the next speaker.
I'm just not sure why we would even open it up.
Open up?
Open up having multifamilies where Halifax is.
I have a opinion of that.
Great, we have, you know, we have multiple, we have multiple family now.
We do, and those two areas that we have multifamily houses in seem to be, we're a lot of problems in the schools.
Okay. What we're trying to do, we're not here to encourage or discourage the building. We're just here to make sure that we've got a bylaw that protects the town and makes sure that the developers have to do what we want them to do, and to get, to avoid the litigation that's involved in the prior bylaw. So we're not condoning anything. There's a multiple-step process before anybody else comes in.
And is we the planning board or is we the town? Because I'm not sure.
I'm only, I'm speaking for the planning board because we're the ones, unfortunately, that have to make that decision if a proposal comes in.
My opinion is against multifamily changing the bylaw. Just so that you know, we're, it's not all of us.
I don't, this is kind of the first I'm really hearing about it. I've seen a few things here and there on the radar, but everything's been Zoom meetings and everything else, so it's kind of the first I'm really.
All right, is there any other comments? If not, Mr. Masiello. Hold on, I'm sorry, just let everybody speak and then.
Jessica Paulberry, 13, White Street. I don't remember when we voted on this at town meeting, but it was like 2017 or 18, I'm not really sure when. But the town voted down multifamily. Why is it being brought up? And this does impact schools. So there should be more than 25 people here. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Anybody else? Not? Oh.
Michael Debona, 229 Frank Street. So I have a question for the board. On these developments, is there a way that you can limit the number of applications on a parcel? I know going through the parcels behind my house, over the 10 years, we've had many, many, many different variations, and the developer never has to withdraw his proposal. So he presents something to the town, you talk about it, you guys decide if it's feasible or not, then he comes back with another variation of that same development or that same parcel. Then even they'll have multiple parcels that are combined, and they'll kind of break one parcel off and try to develop that little parcel that we used to be involved in the big parcel that's still in that application that's before the town. Is there any way to limit the number of applications on a parcel? Or have the, have the applicant withdraw that before they submit something else?
I think in your particular scenario, you were involved with a 40B, which the town has no, we have the ability to issue a special permit, but if that special permit is not to the liking of that developer, then they get what they want out of housing court. At least with this particular bylaw, if it's not going to be a 40B, then we have the rights to determine what's going to be there. To answer your question, the bylaw would prohibit anything more than, I believe, 12 units.
I'm not necessarily concerned about the number of units. I'm concerned about when a, when a developer comes in and makes an application to use that parcel. Can we require them to withdraw that proposal before they decide to change their mind and submit something else? Can a parcel only have one application for development on it at one time?
Well, I'm going to say that we don't have any control over that, but I can't see why you'd have two proposals at one time if, if one of the boards is going to review a proposal for an eight-lot multifamily development, and then you want to do a 10-lot multifamily development. I would say that the board is not going to entertain both of those. They're going to say, which one do you want? If they have to withdraw that because of some feedback or some issues that the board determines that, you know, this might not qualify for 10 units, you might want to look at eight, and that's just a negotiating thing. Then we go from 10 to eight. But I doubt very much you'd get two proposals, one for eight, one for 10. Like I said, you might go 10, drop to eight. I don't think you'd get one from eight to 10.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Instead of, instead of thinking, can we make that for both?
As I said, then you are entitled to it. Now, agenda items, unofficial business. If we had a matter, a site plan approval, a subdivision, then I agree with you, that your public records request could have been filled. All right? Beyond that, I don't know. I can see your request. All I got was.
I have a question.
Okay, let me just finish. I got, I got your request.
To say, when you make that eight, eight proposal, before you make the 10, you have to withdraw the eight. So we know where we're standing. I mean, we went from single filming homes to multi-filming homes to a 40B, and now there's solar. So we've gone through all this, and then during the solar project, they wanted to do a single filming home on the front lot used to access the solar. So there's so many different proposals going on, and I feel that if we're not coming up as, as the constituents in town saying, guys, this is wrong, this is where, this is the true facts of this whole case, we can't, you know, you guys can't know every single thing that's going on at every single parcel in town. And I feel like the developers really try to pull the wool over the board's eyes and try, almost try to pull a fast one. I'm just trying to figure out, if you have a parcel that's under a, a site plan or even an application, can we require them to withdraw that application before they submit something else before the town?
I'm just going to kind of defer that. My answer is no. Okay? But I would ask if she wants to make a comment on that, I don't believe we have the ability nor the right to, to tell her, to the developer that he can either do the proposal or withdraw it. Usually if there's a bad proposal, we might ask somebody to withdraw it, with or without prejudice, you know? Usually without prejudice, so they can reset it something, but.
And I know this doesn't really.
If it's not, then.
Yeah, this doesn't really impact single filming homes because someone's coming in, they want to build their house on that lot, and they're going to do that, but I'll, thank you.
I'm sure that he knows the facts way better than I do. I just, I find it hard to believe that a developer will, will apply numerous times on the same parcel because they have to pay the application fee, the abutter notifications, peer review, and then furthermore, all land use permits are timed. So for variance, you have 100 days. For a special permit, you, you have to hear it within 65 days and close it. So the zoning board of appeals, if they are looking at a special permit on one property, and then, you know, 30 days later, they get another special permit application on the same property, they could easily just deny the first one, and then they're stuck in repetitive petition, which means that you have two, they have to wait two years unless they come to the planning board and the planning board determines that it's completely different. So I just, I find it hard to believe that any, any applicant would apply again. That's, it's a lot of money. So I'm thinking what they were doing instead was, was revising their proposal, as, as the chairman said, and coming in with a whole different proposal for the same property, and that's, that's tough. That's a board call, whether it's a completely different project. If it's a completely different project, the board can say, listen, we want a new application fee, we want peer review, we want you to notify the abutters, things like that. But they shouldn't have, I agree, they should not have numerous things in parallel that would just be too hard to track, honestly. It's really hard.
This bylaw is not going to either prevent that or allow it. We're not going to allow it.
Okay.
Does that mean?
That's a good statement though, that we're not going to allow. We can all agree tonight that 25 was that we're not going to allow it, but in two years, five years, 10 years, when it happens.
If it's a 40B.
Yeah, 40Bs, right.
Yeah, and I believe that was your scenario down.
It was one of many, yeah.
One of five.
There was five different proposals?
Single-family homes, apartments, multifamily, 40B, and now solar.
Okay.
And none of them, not one was withdrawn.
I have a question. Were they new applications for each project or were they just changes in the project throughout one application?
That, I'm not 100% sure of if they were new applications.
I'd love to know.
Yeah.
We're getting just a little bit away from the subject, so is there anybody else that's got a comment? Go ahead. So, speaker, please.
David Masiello, 1610th Ave. What did you say? I didn't quite hear you about what was brought up at the meeting was taken down and then.
2018, it was voted.
Four. I didn't hear the whole thing.
About, wasn't it 150 feet?
There was a change that found, yeah.
Which was turned down.
Okay.
We've already talked about multifamilies in 2018.
And it's placed again here?
And now it's here again.
Again, okay. So the point that I want to make because of that was that, for, how long have we had the, the standard bylaws that we've been applying by 20-plus years, right? Closer to 30?
I guess, I guess.
30? In that ballpark?
30, 35.
Okay. The thing about that.
1261.
Well, the multifamily. Multifamily will change.
Mid-'90s, I believe.
Around 2007.
Okay, go ahead.
Good point, why? Anyways, so my point with that is, is one of the things that you referenced this evening was there isn't enough land left anyways for people to build, correct? Theoretically? So where do we push 40B in? I understand it's something that has to be done if nothing else is left, but if we don't have enough land left to build anyways, where are we going to put 40B? We're over, I know I've already repeated myself, I'm going to repeat myself, where we're already over inundated with how things are, the school's not big enough, we don't have enough police force, we don't have enough fire, we don't have, whatever you want to call it, okay? It's just going to increase this little town's taxes. It's going to keep jacking them up, jacking them up, jacking them up. The bylaws that were for multifamily worked up until recently, that we all know about, and this is what, this is the point that I'm trying to make, not to be against it by any means, because if the bylaws were followed in the beginning, none of this litigation would have been happening. If the bylaws had been followed from the very beginning, according to the way the multifamilies were set up, similar or whatever, there's not enough town people that know about it. There's not enough people that are being alarmed, and I'm going to use that word, of what's going to happen come the future, because honestly, my point of it is, is we have Amanda Estates that's coming up. That's been a lot of stuff going on with that. And these are, are these literally being written around from what we've seen from other town multifamilies, which I've heard in past discussions, because I've made it to some of these meetings? Are we writing these, and this, this is just an inquiry, I'm not pointing fingers or anything, are we writing these around to allow, to help Amanda Estates get in? One way or the other, the townspeople need to know what's going on. They need to understand, everybody in this room needs to understand what's gonna happen for this town. How much traffic are we gonna get? Did we do any type of surveys on this? How much more traffic is there gonna be on these different roads? Have you, does anybody in, does everybody in here live in Halifax? Raise your hand. Okay. How many people drive up and down 106 and 58 and see it about 3:30 in the afternoon? It's like frickin' LA traffic. Okay, it's getting worse. This is not, I'm not trying to pick on anybody or point fingers or anything, I'm just trying to bring up things that the town needs to really look at, including our planning boards, zoning boards, selectmen, everybody really need to take into consideration. I understand we're looking for more money, we're looking for more money as tax revenue for the town, but this is gonna be a problem. I scratched a lot of stuff here quick because I was trying to write, I can't read my own writing. But the 40B, if we don't have enough land for contractors to build, where are they gonna push 40B? So, sorry, sorry everybody, I took a few time.
I just want to just briefly comment, and if any of the board members want to comment. We're not condoning multifamily development. We have a bylaw that's been on the books since, whether it was the mid 80s or the mid 90s, that's very problematic. Let me just finish. The bylaw itself is very problematic. Anybody that's looked at this bylaw and read it, it's very confusing. It's ended up with a lot of litigation. Most people don't realize that all of the multifamily developments that we have in town, the one at the corner in Twin Lakes, these all were put in town through court orders because of the multifamily bylaws. We're hoping that this bylaw, okay, will keep us out of court. All right? We think that this is a mechanism, all right? And we're not saying that anybody's coming or they're not coming to build houses in town. We just need to make sure that our bylaw is a mechanism that's gonna keep us out of court.
How many court...
Come up to the speaker.
How many court cases have we had from our past bylaw, though? How many have we had that affected?
Twin Lakes ended up in court with a court order.
Okay.
Prior to the bylaw.
Prior to the bylaw.
The one at the corner ended up with the same thing. Now we have a need to stay.
Prior to the bylaw.
So what I'm saying is...
Hold on, can I just give you...
You can just finish, then I'll give to the speaker. So that's the intent of the bylaw. I mean, that's why we spent a multiple amount of time, and it was various board members and I don't know if there's any citizens at large, to try to get this bylaw to keep us out of court, okay? Because the other one is just too problematic. There are some differences.
But the multifamily bylaws were set up to protect the single family homeowners, wasn't it, weren't they? So that they don't, so that the multifamily, the multifamily homes don't get special, special things that the single family homeowners can, because single family homeowners technically can't have an in-law or a pop, according to it. And then you go, so I understand there's confusion, right? There's confusion, but where, you know, someone wants their mom that's elderly living with them and they try to do it the right way, it's not right?
Just to address, you can't have an in-law on a single family, you can't have a multifamily.
That's understood, okay? But the point of it is, is the options for the multifamily homes are special permit, but it doesn't seem like, and listen, I'm not claiming to be a real estate guru or know all this politics about this stuff, I'm just kinda, I'm a homeowner. Okay, I live in the town of Halifax, I want to protect my property and see what's going on and watch how this is gonna unfold, and I don't really think it's the right way. It's just my opinion, but I think, I think we need to really get the town involved. We gotta push it. If the town doesn't show up, it's their problem, it's our problem. But to push on, on putting more multifamily, you know, to really dissect what it was, it worked for X amount of years and it was upheld. And then all of a sudden, this little change had to happen here, this little change had to happen here, and this little change had to happen here, but for what? Because they didn't follow the original bylaws. That's why. Things were given ahead of time and for certain things that shouldn't have been. And we all know what I'm talking about. And this is what the town needs to know.
Amy, you want to respond or you want to...
Yes, the bylaws for multifamily were changed after Twin Lakes and Lydon Lane were put in because the elementary school was overflowed and they had to go to Pembroke. A lot of kids had to go to Pembroke. And the Silver Lake system had double school, double school sessions because we overloaded the schools with too many people. And that's why those were changed. And that's why it goes along with subdivision control, which begs us to look at how much water, how much traffic, how it'll affect our town as far as our resources for the people that reside in the town, because these bylaws are here to protect. And, you know, like some of my great mentors would say, we cannot forget history or we are doomed to repeat it.
Do we have...
Ashley, just a second. I kind of want to piggyback off of what Dave said, just put the statement out there. Again, as somebody who has children in the town, I moved here for the Silver Lake School District, I want my kids to be able to go to a public school and have the option of VOTech to do the things that they do here. They have great sports, all these things. My biggest concern with what we're about to do is overpopulating the schools. We don't have enough land to have our own middle school and high school, we're not sure. We have to pay for those schools. So now our taxes are going up to put in these multifamily homes to support those kids coming in. And I have pretty young kids, so for any parent here that, you know, wanted your kids to go to Silver Lake or all that because, you know, it's good for college, it's good for VOTech, they want to do this, there's no saying what Halifax High School is gonna have to offer at all. We might be the first graduating class of Halifax High School. What is that gonna look like on a college application? What is that gonna look like if our kids wanted to go to a VOTech and now they have to go to South Shore or Old Colony or whatever the situation, because we overpopulate to the point? How many people are gonna leave this town to go to Kingston?
The town people need to know.
They need to know. And we're excluding a huge number of citizens tonight that are sitting in waiting to see if their kids are gonna be sitting three feet apart or six feet apart during COVID or if they're gonna go remote or if we're gonna have jobs because we have to stay home with our children. Well, you hold this meeting for however many people you think are gonna show up. That was a way bigger deal than this. We've gone this long without changing these bylaws. This could have waited two more weeks. This could have waited until we have town meeting. Why have we still not had town meeting but we're talking about this tonight? This is so wrong on so many levels and there are a lot of parents who should be here tonight.
I'm just gonna make one statement. This meeting is required. The function of this board...
Town meeting is required, and we had an election before town meeting.
Let me just finish. The function of this board is to hold this hearing and to make a decision or a recommendation to town meeting. It's you folks in the audience that are going to decide...
There's not enough people here to do that.
There's folks in the audience that are going to decide whether or not this bylaw is gonna pass. Our function is to hold a hearing and try to make a recommendation.
Is there a way to postpone this when there's not a Silver Lake School Committee meeting going on, so that people can actually come?
We weren't aware of a Silver Lake School Committee meeting. This was our first opportunity to...
It's been postponed for the same amount of time as this, it's right next to you.
Jessica Paul, very again. I was one of those kids that got bused, so we didn't get home till like 4:30 in the afternoon. I don't want your kids doing the same thing.
I won't, I'll leave this down. I'll go look in Harbor with the new elementary school, I'll go to...
But my other issue is, why all of a sudden is multifamily a new issue when it's been followed for so long before Amanda Estates? Why is this one project an issue that's made everyone change the bylaws? Why can't it follow the bylaws that were already in place? It shouldn't be any more special than anything else.
Is there anybody else that would like to be here?
I'd like to make a comment. I mean, the bylaws that are being proposed here tonight are in response to a new interpretation of our bylaws. We were under an interpretation prior to changing town council. Our old town council didn't have a problem with the interpretation of our bylaws. We have a building inspector who interprets them different than they were interpreted before. These bylaws have been there. If they followed town council's advice, we wouldn't be changing. This meeting tonight, in my opinion, from the people that have called me, should not have happened tonight. This is during COVID. You know what? We need to postpone this to another year when we can get past the COVID. The COVID is wiping out everybody. People's kids, they don't know what they're gonna do tomorrow, next week, next month. This, to me, doesn't have that kind of urgency that it needs to be taken up right now. The meetings that we had were great meetings, but there were a small number of people and mostly people from the town hall that are deciding what happens. What needs to happen is the public needs to know that these things are going on and this is going to affect your life. And it needs to be brought out and we need to reach out to the people and see if this is what you want. And that's what this hearing is supposed to be about. We're supposed to be taking your input and deciding whether or not this is good for our town. As members of the planning board, we are your representatives. Reach out to us and call us. But I do not agree with this meeting tonight limiting this to 25 people and knowing what's going on with the school right now. I know a ton of people have called me and said, what's going on? I didn't know about the meeting was gonna happen here tonight until two days ago. So I, my vote on this would be no.
Mr. Chairman? If I may. The opinion that changed was from John Huxham to Kim Salant. And they are with the same law firm, they were with the same law firm at the same time. I didn't come into this until litigation had already commenced, litigation was underway, and litigation is still being represented by Kim Salant. So it is not, it was not the change of town council that sparked any kind of litigation. That litigation was underway. In fact, I came into it after July 3rd of 2019, when the judge had already made his decision. And I stated numerous times, I do not understand the judge's decision. I don't know what more to tell you, Mr. Andrews, but I do not...
I'm not saying it was your, I'm not saying it was your decision, but Huxham was our town council, his opinion of that case was right. That was changed.
Hold on, hold on.
No, no, I'm speaking, please.
Mr. Huxham is not our town council.
He's not.
Mr. Huxham was our town council. I've been on the board...
He was with Durantis and with Kim Salant. Kim Salant is also with Durantis.
I've been on the board 22 years. He was town council. That's kind of how I see it. I don't mean to say that you've changed anything. That's not what I was getting at. But up until his decision got changed and we went away from him, everything was okay. And now all of a sudden, the building inspector comes up with a different decision and now we're down the road spending thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees defending something. I don't want to get into that. We're here tonight about the zoning bylaws and I don't think tonight is the place for this discussion because we don't have enough people. And I would like to see a time when we're not saying only 25 people can show up.
I agree.
I agree.
Want to be heard again?
Yeah, I'm gonna end it with one more thing. The fact that, the reason why we're doing these bylaws, I do stand behind the fact it's because people that are in elected seats are making their own interpretation of the bylaws to possibly benefit themselves, their own businesses, their own properties, whatever the situation. So to change the bylaws because we can't get people in the town hall that can all come together and decide what the correct interpretation should be, that shouldn't be what happens. We need to then change the elected officials to follow the bylaws. That's really what we should be doing.
I'm gonna add to that with Ashley. The one thing I gotta say, and I'm gonna bring up Amanda Estates one last time. If the bylaws had been followed correctly and guided the contractor correctly, those houses should have been filled already. Should have had residents in them and it's the town's fault for not getting involved the correct way. Let me finish, please. Let me finish. It should have been the town to guide them correctly, how to get those houses built and filled with the right people.
We have a bylaw.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Nothing to do with Amanda Estates.
I'm not saying it didn't. Those houses should have been filled already. I'm saying that they should have been, they should have been followed as the bylaws stood. The town should have guided the contractor correctly so that he could have had those houses filled already.
Can I just ask you just for an opinion and go for it? You work in many towns. The original bylaw that has been changed, is it in your opinion that that bylaw was problematic and created some of the confusion in the lawsuits that we have?
In my opinion, yes. And I would go further to say that I think the judge had an issue with the bylaw too because his decision doesn't necessarily make much sense. I don't think he could come to terms with it. This is a, there's a couple of points that should be made. Out of most multifamily developments, bylaws, four is a very, to have four as a maximum is a very, very low number. Most are anywhere between eight and 24, but different towns and you have to take the town as it comes. And the other thing that's important to note is that Halifax has a great dimensional chart right now where you require 40,000 square feet of upland for any house to be built on. So that is why you're not seeing a lot of development because you have 40,000 square feet that you have, that has to be, your lot has to be 40,000 square feet of upland. Now, we haven't changed that at all. With multifamily, we've just, we've gone up exponentially with each unit. However, that's where 40B comes in. 40B does not have to abide by the 40,000 square feet per, or 40,000 square feet per unit or per house. And so what they're gonna, you know, a 40B will come in, they don't have to follow the dimensional chart. And if you, if you don't allow, you know, some kind of multifamily development, even limited, like we're proposing, I guess my concern would be that you would be, you know, you would be susceptible to 40B where you'd have these very, very tiny lots. We discussed, during this, we discussed doing a cluster subdivision where you can reduce the size of the lots and create more open space, and that was resoundingly denied. And no one wanted to do that. You want to keep your lots large and that's what this bylaw does.
Is there...
Yes.
Thank you for explaining that. If this is so confusing, though, more people should be here. More people should hear what she has to say so we can all understand it as a town, not 25 people. So why can't we postpone this? That's my question. I don't think this is a fair representation of the town because you've had quite a few people actually speaking against it and I haven't heard too many people for it, which, you know, that's kind of the prerogative of the town right now. They're not ready for it.
And we do have some open cheer. We can't control the COVID. I don't see that...
I'm not saying that, but you could have postponed it.
The reason we held this meeting is because we have town meeting that's either gonna be scheduled on the 29th of August or 30th or potentially September 12th.
Right. But my point is, why isn't this where everyone can actually listen to all of our concerns versus just this?
The same process is gonna be followed at town meeting. The function of this board is to hold a hearing, to get its input and to make a vote.
But you've also heard the input of people actually here and you still want to proceed with multifamily when everyone else is saying...
We're not trying to proceed, we're holding a hearing.
No, I get that.
And then, once the hearing is closed, we're gonna debate that, you know, amongst the members. So I don't know that anybody's made up their mind as to whether or not we want multifamily. We have multifamily.
I understand that.
So the biggest question to me is that, do we have a multifamily bylaw that's gonna keep us in litigation or do we have a multifamily bylaw that's more restrictive, I believe, than the original bylaw? I mean, we're looking at 80,000 square feet for two units, whereas the old bylaw was 40,000 square feet. I mean, you could put, you put eight units. You put eight units. Well, so, under the old bylaw, how many units do we put on 40,000 square feet?
One per acre.
It's 10 acre minimum. So, what we were looking at prevalently in the old bylaw, that was brought up to me by a member of the zoning board of appeals, is that we were looking at buildings with 10 units. Because the minimum is 10 acres, and you could have... You had to have 40,000 square feet per unit. So, you were looking at buildings with 10...
Okay, so, under the old bylaw...
An acre, 40,000, sorry.
Can I add?
That was a title by me.
You clarify that. So, under the old bylaw, you could have one massive 10-unit building.
Exactly. And that's what this bylaw is... That's why this bylaw is different. We didn't want apartment-type buildings. We wanted single fam... You know, we wanted single unit, meaning a townhouse of four would be the maximum.
Mayors, how much frontage?
158.
To have four units or...
The frontage requirement for the development on the entrance, I believe, is 150 feet. And then, the separate... Then, each unit, dwelling unit, whether it be two or four, has to be on a lot that has 150-foot frontage, it's got 50-foot setback. And I believe the setback dimensional requirement is the same as a single-family house.
And there's also 150 feet of width frontage, which was important. So, you can't have crazy-shaped lots. You have to have...
Okay, you gotta have a lot that's perpendicular. So, that unit would be on a lot that has 150-foot frontage, 50-foot front setback. I believe it's 40 and 30.
So, you can't have multiple lots and put them under one for multifamily, correct?
Multiple lots?
You don't have four units.
I'm just like, in general, like, if someone were to own multiple lots, can they now take that and make it into one lot to build a multifamily on?
Well, you could. I mean, you could take multiple lots and combine them. The common practice, though, unless it's something unusual, it's worth more for one particular lot than it is for the multiple...
I understand that, but some people have odd lots.
Yeah. I mean, I suppose you could, but you still have to meet the 10-acre requirement.
They'd have to have the 150 feet of frontage.
Okay. Thank you.
If they added all...
Do we have any...
One more. Julian Andrews. This is really, really important. And like we said, there's 25 people, and I'm just shouting down here, so it'd be 25. Why can't you decide to postpone this hearing to a later date, say, 2021? So, hopefully, COVID would be over, and more people could understand what's going on. And so, they're shoving it down our throats in, say, what, August or September? And we're still freaking out because our kids are either in school or not school, and we're still dealing with elderly who are still afraid some smash to come out of their houses. So, wouldn't it be better for the town to post... To continue this hearing to 2021 where COVID's not there, and everybody will understand a little more than this just happening? And, oh, yeah, we had a hearing, and this is what we decided.
Is there anyone else?
Is that even an option?
Yeah. Hi, Ms. Drummond, 65 Pond Street. Going along with most of the people here, you know, if there's any way that it can be delayed so people can understand, and also really understand, like, a comparison, you know, she was talking about how it may actually be more beneficial, like, because it'll make it that more... Like, if it makes it more difficult, I think people would be happy to know that, that we... Because we don't want more multifamily. We don't want our taxes going up. We don't wanna have to worry about a new elementary school or, you know, any of that other stuff. So, I think if there's a good comparison, if you can say, "This is how it's changed, and it either benefits or how it can hurt us," so we know the true facts, and then give people more time and the ability to have more people to hear it.
I think Judy Quissel has made that, but I mean, if you wanna just repeat yourself, I think this bylaw is a little more restrictive than the old bylaw.
It's much more restrictive.
Much?
It's much more. It deals with... It deals with all the setbacks between buildings. It deals with the buffer between public development around. It deals with parking. It deals with lighting a lot more, a lot more. But we have the luck... I mean, I guess one good thing is we have the experience that... So, we knew what to put in.
I have a question for Amy. I have a question. So, by allowing somebody with, say, 120,000 square feet to build a multifamily with three units, or 180,000 square feet with four units, that's under the 10-acre minimum, so is that making it more difficult?
Well, it's limiting the number of units. So, with a 10-acre... To have a minimum 10-acre, you're going to get 10 units because of that.
We're keeping the minimum 10-acre?
In the existing.
Okay. Making sure. Because there's a lot changed, and... Okay, cool.
So, the minimum 10 acres, 180,000 square feet, strictly regulates that structure. So, if you've got a... My memory's correct. If you had a four-unit structure...
180, yeah.
It's gotta be on 180,000.
I just wanted to clear...
On a 10-acre lot.
Yeah, I wanted to clear aside that the 10 acres was...
Yes, it's definitely so. And is 10 acres less... There's gotta be 10 acres exclusive of landlines. So, that... I don't think that has changed.
No, that has not changed.
No landlines at all.
We just meant more restrictive.
We have changed that. That's always... Because your dimensional chart, each... As of right now, a single-family house has to have 40,000 square feet of upland, contiguous upland.
Always.
Yes.
Always. Right.
Do we have any... Any other comments? Any members of any boards?
Kim King sent in an email. It's two parts in it. She's a resident. She wanted it to be heard at the meeting.
You wanna read it?
I'll read the part of it that pertains to this here, right now, and then the other part when we get to the other bylaws. So, "Dear Members of the Planning Board, I write not in support of the multifamily bylaw changes. Highest regards, Kim King."
Seeing no further debate, I'm gonna look for a motion to close the hearing.
No.
We have other bylaws.
We do have other bylaws, huh?
We do? Oh, okay. What's going on the next one? Oh, wait a minute. Aren't we passing over?
No. The floodplain bylaw, Gina said to pass that over.
Okay.
People wanna stay here later to talk about something we're not gonna do anything with.
No. We'll pass over that particular bylaw. I gotta apologize. So, we'll pass over the floodplain. And the next bylaw...
I don't think so, but they've got to hear.
Um... The next bylaw is submitted by Robert Maker.
Hello, hey, boys. So, right now, the way the bylaw is written, with the zoning that we have right now, where it can only be industrial zone, it pretty much shuts off that whole area with the schools and everything in there. And we need to bring business to town.
I'm just gonna stop for a second. All right. A lot of people in the room have no... Zoning can be very confusing, okay? So, you're on the maker of the article. What I'd like to have you do is explain what you were trying to do, and then we're gonna have to get into dimensional charts, and then... But please do that.
Okay. As written right now, to get a special permit for marijuana establishment, for dispensaries, what we're looking for, you have to be in industrial zone with a special permit. And so, I don't know if the town's aware when industrial zones are. It's basically down...
Sure. Punch it. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure everybody knows where they are. So, right now, that's inaccessible at all due to the dance school in there, due to the daycare center they got in there. So, it pretty much shuts off that whole bylaw. It's pretty much gonna... It can't be used. So, for us to bring a dispensary in town, we're looking to change it to a business commercial zoning. We need business in town. As a town resident, we pay a lot in taxes. And a dispensary ends up, I believe it's something like 3% of sales goes to the town, not to mention what you use as a host agreement. It can employ anywhere between 10 and 20 people, which would probably be just all local town people. I've heard people say you could bring in people from other cities that, you know, are trouble or no good. Wilbrookton, Wareham, Plymouth, they all have dispensaries. The people that are gonna shop in this dispensary are gonna be family, friends, and neighbors. It's not gonna bring people from out of town. And we do need some business coming. There's a lot of vacant buildings. We haven't nailed down a property right yet because we're still trying to make sure this is gonna go through before we do research and actually, you know, find a place.
I'm just gonna stop for a second. Because I'm not clear on what you're talking about.
Oh, okay.
So, you were trying to open up a marijuana or...
Dispensary, yes.
So, a dispensary. So, you wanna be able to not grow? You wanna be able to sell marijuana?
Sell, yes. And that has to... Obviously, you gotta go through the CCC, get licensing. It's very tough going through this whole process. And I need a special permit by the town itself as long as this bylaw is changed. So, it's not like we can go and vote, and then I can go and open up a place. It's us to go through the town and everything else to get a special permit. But in order for us to do that, to bring the revenue to town, to employ some of these people and fill up some of these buildings, we need to change the bylaw. It's just not suitable for the town right now.
All right. Since you're on the maker, what I'm gonna do is ask the board if they got any questions from you.
Sure.
And now, ask the audience to make any comments. Amy? Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
I knew I had one.
Sure.
You are looking to open up marijuana establishments in our business zones.
I think it's business commercials. I read it right?
We have business zones.
Business, okay. It's business. I'm sorry. It is business, yeah.
It did say commercial, but we have a business zone.
Yeah. Okay, it's business.
And I don't know that you could explain to the audience where our business zones are. Do you know where our business zones are?
I don't know where all of them are. I know down 106, 58.
You realize, too, that in our business zones, we allow residential?
Yes.
So, a lot of our business zones start at that Hanson-Halifax town line, up to the church, or the La Ponset Inn in Hanson. And then, we have business zones throughout the center of town, and then we have business zones down at this end of town. So, when you're looking to make a change like this, you're actually... Just for the audience, you're looking to put marijuana establishments within a business zone that potentially is gonna have a residence.
Again, it'd be by special permit, so it'd be up to the board to actually...
That's fine.
You know, if it's a problem or whatever, and I don't... You know, obviously, if there's a problem getting a special permit, I wouldn't be able to open it up. So, there's other things that go with that, too.
The audience, unless you've got anything else...
No, I'm good. I'm good. I can answer any questions.
I have a question for him.
Sure.
Is that okay?
That's fine. Just to make a point.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not for or against. I guess that's gonna be a question. But I am still gonna put it out there that this is also something more people should be here for.
Okay, well, through this. Why don't you step back? Let her go to the mic. That way, cameras on the mic.
Probably greeted schools, huh?
I'll put my mask on.
I was just saying, I still think this is something there should be more people here for, and I'm not asking for or against. What is the regulation in a business zone as far as being... I know you sat down here, a dance, a school, whatever. Are you allowed to be in a certain area of people who sell liquor, restaurants? So, my concern is, you're talking here, we have a liquor store, we have a restaurant, a school.
Not a liquor store. It's where they pour.
Where there's liquor, they pour liquor up in 500 feet from a church or a school.
So, we have a church?
Yeah.
But a liquor store?
Yeah.
Not in the same...
Right, exactly.
There's a lot of...
There's a lot of stuff that goes with it. That's why you need a special permit from the town. They're not just gonna say, "Hey, Bob, hey, you can have a license." It doesn't work like that.
My concern is, you're saying you can't do it down there.
Yeah.
I guess I'm kinda just wondering where you're gonna do it because...
We haven't...
The business, we still have schools, liquor stores, bars.
That's why it's so tough to find a place, trust me.
And I guess I just don't wanna get to that point where it turns into, "Okay, never mind, I can't do it there either. Let's do residential, special permit."
And with the CCC, they have to... They have so many hoops to jump through to even get it. So, if there's a problem, or if there's any, like, optical issues, they're not gonna give it to you. They're not. It's just...
I'm all for more business in the town.
We need it. Do you know how much we pay in taxes?
Like multifamilies and more business, that's how we would fix a problem?
This business right here, if you guys can research, like Wareham or some of these towns, they get 3% off the top, plus money from a host agreement. And it'll employ a lot of people in here. And we have a lot of buildings that need to be filled, payroll taxes, everything else. It's... Hanover's doing well. They're getting 250,000 a year just from a dispensary in there that's... It's just medical. It's not even recreational. And this would not be medical, it's just recreational. That's the license that we'd go for for the CCC.
So, would you be able to do medical, too?
The medical is a whole nother operation that you have to jump through hoops at 30 feet in the air. It's just not worth it right now.
Would you be able to go a different zone if you want medical and not recreational?
No. It's all under the same umbrella.
According to that.
It's... Yeah. I mean, it's all under the same umbrella. Regardless, there's some places that have half the recreational, half medical, that you have two different doors to go in. And there's all types of high security that goes with it.
I think it would be fabulous for you to have some kind of plan of where you think this could go in the town.
That'll come up at some point. We have to do that before the special permit.
And be able to tell more than, I think, like, the 12 people who are left right now because they're just getting annoyed.
Are they gonna be filming this? Is this gonna be on, like, YouTube or a town thing? Or is this...
YouTube area.
So, a lot of people will see it anyway. If any questions, I mean, anybody can hit me up or whatever for...
I think it would be cool to see, like, everything that you say. Do your presentation and see where...
We have to do that, the presentation, to get the special permit.
Where the... I'm just curious where you think you're gonna go.
We have a few options, but nothing concrete.
Are you allowed to say what the options are?
Well, we don't even know because we haven't made deals with people because we can't Well, we don't even know because we haven't made deals with people because we can't make a deal, sign a lease, anything or buy a property until we go through this stuff.
But if you're looking at specific properties...
I tell you, we've looked at some of these lots on 106, but not to come out of it yet. I mean, we, whatever's available...
Past companies that way.
Yeah, down, okay, too. But whatever, there's so many guidelines and so many things that you have to do. It narrows it down considerably. So I could say there's 30 places available. Maybe a handful will work anyways.
What will you do about security and traffic and all that?
If you call the CCC up, they'll give you a security list as long.
We're talking about zoning, how to go. Start talking about the business.
It's a lot. It's a lot to handle.
Well, I mean, traffic would not fall under a zoning issue, how we're going to regulate that?
They're looking at changing the zoning throughout the town. If they do change the zoning and he comes to site plan, we'd obviously be looking at any traffic impact.
We'd have to do a traffic plan.
Although with this zoning, I don't know where it's going to fit. It'll fit under either the ZVA or obviously it'll be site plan. But the only issue that we have right now is, he's making a presentation to make the zoning change. And let's just kind of stay with that. Anybody got any other comments, questions?
Kim King's letter states... I write in support of the special permit for grow facility dispensaries and such within commercial zones. Highest regards, Kim King.
And I'll just go to the board. Any questions or comments while we're in the hearing? We'll deliberate after.
No, I thought that Ashley was asking a lot of great questions that a lot of people at home would probably want to know, but we're good.
Gordon? If we don't hear any further debate, I would look for a motion to close the zoning bylaw.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Speaker, get a mic, please.
I'm just curious, are you closing this or are you continuing it so more people can be involved next time?
We are closing it.
Okay.
And then we'll make a decision. I will entertain a motion to close the zoning bylaw hearing.
I might want to discuss that. I actually think that everybody...
We will discuss it.
No, I mean, like, right now before we close because I'm not ready to make, I'm not ready to vote on that motion based on a question I have.
Okay, go ahead.
The reason that I'm going to say this is because every single person in this room has stood up and asked for a postponement, and we work for them. And I think that that's what we should do.
Okay.
If you close it, can you move it in later or do you have to postpone? It's just a, you're in the chair. It's a physical question. If you close it, can it be...
I'm going to defer that. Charlie, if...
There were a couple of questions you're asked about. One is on the public hearing process. If you're going to have another public hearing, you can always have another public hearing. There's nothing preventing you. You have to do the proper notice. I think it's at least two weeks after prior notice, for instance, in Halifax, we call it, but a practical matter means three weeks because you all meet on Thursday, they publish on Friday. So you'd have to, you know, whatever date, it doesn't matter. Right now, we're posted for August 29th for town meeting. It is likely, my expectation is we're going to move to September 12th. It's more likely we'll be able to get a form on that date when it's not summer versus August 29th when it is. We're still working on the budget now that the new figures have come in from the state. And that gives us a couple more weeks to both plan the town meeting, plan the budget, and everything else. The thing about having a second hearing, it won't matter in the sense of, it doesn't mean that people shouldn't speak about all these matters. What I'm meaning is that the articles are on the warrant. You have had your hearing legally. You have met the requirement. Even if you don't make any recommendation to town meeting, you have met that requirement and town meeting has the decision to make, not just you. You can recommend something, you can not recommend something, and town meeting makes the final decision. That's true whether you close tonight, whether you continue the hearing to another date, which you can do. You could not close tonight. You could continue to your meeting, whether it be the 20th of August, for instance. You could do that. You could hold another hearing. All of that won't matter in that now town meeting makes the decision no matter what happens.
Now or could we make a motion that we listen to our townspeople and listen to everyone stating they want it postponed and not put on this year as an urgency? And Charlie, that's an opinion that you're going to state, so we...
No, it's not. I know what the law is in this case.
But the people are speaking.
The townspeople make the final decision. Right. It's going to be on the warrant. We tell, you know, Barbara Gane or the town club will pick the number out. The article won't come up. If a majority of the people there, there's a vote, yes or no or...
I understand how town meeting works. I understand.
But they can pass over the article. It could be after all the discussion you have at town meeting, the townspeople who are there, the towns voters, choose, you know what? We'd like to delay any action on this. We don't want to vote yes. We don't want to vote no. We're going to vote to pass over. And it can be brought up at some subsequent town meeting, but it's their decision to make, not unfortunately or fortunately the playing boards, not unfortunately or fortunately the people here. It will be the people at town meeting that make the decision.
Okay, so we should disregard all the people who have elected us in this hearing tonight and everything they've stated?
Okay. You're listening to these people, you are going to take what they've said into consideration in terms of making a recommendation to town meeting. That's your job.
I believe that what they said at this hearing is that, well, I guess, all right, fine, so we can take it to the hearing and hope that we can have people not in COVID fear show up and determine the future of our town based on the few that will be able to make it to town meeting.
We'll probably do it on another Monday.
Or what I'm trying to say is that we listen to the people and we postpone the bylaws to be on this town meeting because this is what they're stating and have it in a future town meeting where more people will be educated on what the laws are going to be changed to. And if I'm hearing my, I don't know, I work for all of you. This is what I heard from all of you. That was what I think we should motion to do. We should motion not to have these bylaws on town meeting floor until a later date. Charlie, sit.
Okay.
Seriously, I don't need your opinion.
No, I'm sorry. I'm treating, I have a dog at home that's about, we've had for six weeks. So I hear that and do not ask what the dog's name is, okay? The thing is that the article's on the warrant. It's not the planning board's decision to make when they're...
No, but it was the hearing, everybody in the hearing.
Yes.
Which, by the way, will be on Area 58.
Woman, hold on. Just let it finish.
So that you, the planning board, can in fact make a recommendation to town meeting, we don't think you should vote on these. You shouldn't vote yes, you shouldn't vote no. You should vote to take no action, to pass over, to bring it back to a future town meeting.
Or vote no, so it can't come back next year.
Well, it depends on what the article is. And it depends on what the planning board's recommendation is also. Because if the planning board in fact recommends the article, even with its...
I believe in listening to the people that are here speaking. I think that's what a hearing is for.
You guys need to stop talking over each other so we can hear one person at a time.
I'm just talking to you legally what you can and cannot do and what the procedure is. I'm not telling you what to do. I'm telling you, here's the method for doing it.
Couldn't we legally do what I stated?
No. You can't simply say by the planning board's vote, we shall not allow you to vote on something. You don't have the right to do that. The townspeople at town meeting have the right to make that decision.
The idea of having the hearing is for us to decide whether or not we recommend as a board. We can recommend not, we can recommend all. But that's a recommendation that we make at the town meeting. The articles are already on. We have town meeting. Whenever we have town meeting, those articles are on there. Town meeting is going to ask, what was the opinion of the planning board? And they make a motion for or against. We tell them what it is. At that time, we can also get up and say on our own that we don't think that the town should look at this right now. We should take a vote to pass over. But our job here is to hear the facts. I agree. I wish there were more people here that we could hear, but this is what we have. This is the process that we have. We're having the hearing from here. What I saw, I know how I'm going to vote and what my recommendation is. And that's our job. Whether or not you have another hearing...
Maybe material.
Well, I mean, you could have it, but...
So I'm looking for a motion as to how this board wants to proceed at this point. I'm suggesting that we close the hearing and that we can adjourn the hearing. We can debate it and go to a decision at some point, probably not tonight. The fact that we postpone it is going to be kind of irrelevant. If we postpone it and don't hold another hearing, then there'll be no recommendation at town meeting because we didn't take a vote. So it's my suggestion that we close it. And then if those folks want to, once we get into deliberations, if they want to vote against them, then so be it. And we carry that for town meeting.
So if we postpone, then the inability for them to be voted on would occur?
No, no, no.
Sorry, I tried, everybody.
So I'm looking for some sort of motion which is to close the hearing. And then we can debate it and take a vote, not necessarily tonight. I think we probably do need a little more input. So my suggestion would be to...
Are you going to continue debate tonight?
No, I mean, I think the audience has spoken. I think we all know what the people want between the board. No, I think I would ask that we continue with to our next meeting. That's still going to be a few days before town meeting. The publication is there, so there'll be no recommendation on the warrant. We can get up at that point and either make a recommendation or no recommendation at town meeting.
I don't mind deliberating it tonight.
I'm sorry?
I don't mind deliberating it tonight.
It's your pleasure. It's your pleasure.
I'm just... Well, I'm asking if we close the hearing, you're going to have debate tonight.
If you want to have debate tonight, that's fine.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing for the bylaws changes and open up our regular planning board meeting.
Am I hearing a second? Am I hearing a second?
Let's circle it.
Okay. Our bylaw, oh, okay. I'm sorry. We're going to go to a vote. Amy?
Oh, yes.
Gordon's?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Our hearing is closed. What's the board's pleasure as far as deliberating? Did I miss something? Okay, what's the board's pleasure as far as deliberating?
I wouldn't mind while it's fresh in our minds to remember everything that everybody's said. That'd be good.
Well, we can start with the, the first article would be the multifamily bylaw article. What's the board's pleasure? Do you want to make a motion? Do you want to go into a vote? We've heard the debate. Bear in mind that all we're doing is making a recommendation and we're not making the decision. It's those voters that are coming out of town meeting, they're going to make the decision.
Of course.
Whether it's 25 or 125, we don't know at this point. I just know that town government, we got to deal with COVID-19, so...
I'll make a motion not to recommend the multifamily bylaws.
I will second that motion. And I'd like to add why. Based on everybody who is here at the hearing, I didn't hear anybody stand for it, so therefore we wouldn't be doing right by the people who are elected us if we voted otherwise.
We have a motion in a second. That motion being Gordon not to recommend the zoning bylaw change. Do we have any further debate?
My reason is that I don't think it's been a fair presentation to the people. And ultimately, it's going to be up to the people at town meeting to make up that decision whether we recommend it or we don't recommend it.
Correct. As long as people understand what all we're doing is making our recommendation.
I also would like to say that I see many discrepancies in there. For instance, there is no definition in our bylaws for certain things.
We've closed the hearings.
No, I'm talking, we're debating, right?
No.
So I have the right...
If you had any questions on the bylaw, we should have addressed it then. All we're trying to discuss now, he's got a motion on the floor.
No, I know, but I'm telling you why I have, one of my reasons on why I would vote the way I vote. Because there is missing definitions, there's missing information from them, and it's going to cause more confusion. I don't think there was enough time.
All right, fine. We have a motion in a second. And I'm going to go for a vote. Amy? The motion is not to recommend the zoning bylaw change for multiple family.
I would agree not to recommend it.
So your vote is?
Yes.
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 Gordon?
Rick? No.
I give a vote no. We have a two to two tie. So the, I'm going to clarify that, two to two tie is we would probably defer this to town meeting with no recommendation. I believe that's the way that's going to go.
No, that would be a recommendation at town meeting that would state that it was a two to two.
Well, maybe that's what it says.
That's the same thing. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to article, the zoning article proposed by Mr. Maker, is it, Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Okay, I would be looking for a motion.
I, too, would like to make a recommendation, a motion to not approve.
I would second that motion based on town meeting's votes on this in previous years and hearing the consensus of the voting members.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. And you folks have any other comments? All right, if you want to make a comment or we can go to a vote, Rick? I agree with Gordon and Amy. My problem is that the business districts around town are multiple. And even though there's a special permit process, because we have residential and businesses combined and you can still get residence, then my feeling is that marijuana should be in the industrial zone. Having said that, Rick, you have a vote?
I don't really agree with that. You know, there's so many restrictions on it anyway. It's all special permit. So like he was saying, I mean, you know, the town does need a lot more revenue and obviously nobody wants families in here, so it's got to get it some way. And it's really limited in industry right now or anything like that can go. Very limited. It opens, you know, the gates up a little more to them, but like you said, with all the restrictions, it's all up to special permit, you know? I mean, either we allow it or we don't. I don't think it really makes a heck of a big difference where it's going to be.
So your vote would be yes. And I agree possibly with what you're saying. I'd like to see the businesses. I just don't think that the town is ready to have marijuana establishments other than the industrial zones. So I would vote no.
No, I think you got that reversed.
They won't, I think they should be in industrial zones, not in business.
I think you got the votes backwards. The motion was not to, Rick was saying you would...
Yeah, correct. So we have, we have three noes.
Three noes and a yes. Not on the motion. The motion was not to...
The motion was not to not to approve this, not to recommend.
Not to recommend.
Okay, you voted not to recommend.
You voted yes votes. And Rick would be a no vote because he's not voting with a recommendation.
Okay, you know what I wrote? I wrote not approved. So the motion again is not to recommend.
Right. So the vote would be yes if you don't want to recommend.
I stand corrected. So Amy, your vote is?
Not to recommend.
Yes, it's a yes.
It's a yes or no.
Okay. Which one is not to recommend?
The motion was not to recommend, so you're voting yes to not recommend.
Yes, not to recommend.
I'm voting yes.
Sorry, that just got really confusing.
And I think Rick as well.
More confused, because I wrote not recommend, so I...
So you had a no.
So and Rick, your vote would be no.
All right.
Okay.
I had it.
And then my vote would be yes. So the board's vote, three to one, would be to not recommend this article. Okay.
He got through that.
Now, next order of business is going to be the approval of the minutes of July 16th. And I think Amy had some recommendations?
I just wanted to add in there at the end that I asked if I could go to 241 Franklin Street.
That's fine. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. And I think you did send me an email, but you sent it to the town email, which I don't know how to get, but that's okay. Is there any other, any other amendments to those minutes?
I didn't have any.
You didn't? So we're going to make?
I make a recommendation to approve the minutes with the adjustment or the...
With the adjustments or making...
Change that Amy...
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to recommend approval of the minutes on July 16th, 2020 with the noted changes that Amy was contacting. I'll go to the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Do you have official copies or we sign them in drafts?
Well, the problem is, she needs to make the recommendation. If she, if she's going to make the changes, then we might as well just sign it.
The changes.
Where was the change?
The one with the change.
Yeah, I mean, what you can do if you want to, you want to add the, want a pencil[1693.21] Yeah, I mean, what you can do if you want to, you want to add a pencil in the changes and we'll approve it?
Well, she can stamp them after we approve. That was one of the votes that we have.
And they don't have a stamp?
Oh, you don't have a stamp. Well, we can sign it at the next meeting, next week. It's approved now, so she can post it with the change.
That's fine. I did sign something for her for my stamps, so.
Oh, good. It is on the agenda, are we going to talk about that?
Going to talk about?
The stamp?
No, it's on the agenda because she needed mine, and I did sign one of the papers, so.
Oh, okay.
That's the only signature stamp she needed. Okay, next is a correspondence, email 71620 from Ashton and Sayre regarding a public document request.
Hi.
Yeah, you speak, Chuck. Come on up to the mic.
So, I just want to speak about this a little bit, because I know, Alan, at the time, you were not on the board, and I was on the board. So I just want to make sure we're not having any type of miscommunications on your and my part, I guess.
I just have a question.
Yep.
What is the public document request regarding, is it a planning board matter?
Yep.
All this says is, okay, and what matter is that?
I.
Before the planning board?
When I was on the planning board, we had two different agendas, which I brought here for you, so you could see them, on June 4th and on June 18th, that had three different addresses on them.
Okay, I'm familiar with those agendas, so.
Gold Street, 11A Street, and Pine Street North.
So your public request?
So I emailed our secretary, because I was on the board, asking her for public documents requests, because that's how I was told I had to go about it. It had to be a public documents request. We weren't allowed in the town hall, all that jazz, COVID, blah, blah, blah. Asking for those documents. I never received them. Actually, I received an email from Charlie Seelig saying I would have to pay for them, because they were personal, which they were not. I was a board member, asking for records on addresses that were on our two agendas, or one agenda at the time, because it followed over. I had an attorney get involved and actually ask the town for any and all paid receipts from all board members and town officials that had to pay for items that were on their board. And I was told that there were none to produce. So I was a little concerned why I was being asked to pay for records. So can I just finish where I go with this, and then I'll let you talk?
Well, I don't know that you've got a matter that we can help you with.
No, we do have a matter, because I never received my records.
Public document request to this, did you make?
To this board, to your board, to your board, to your secretary, to my secretary at the time, because I was on the board. So I never received the records, neither here nor there. I dealt with that on another level. On the last planning board meeting, I heard that my records request was satisfied, or whatever. It was not. I did not receive any of my records requests for either of those three properties. I reached out to Joanne again and said, I just want to be clear. I have not yet received my records request. I got an email from Joanne that you had sent her. To sum it up, I won't read the whole thing, that to your knowledge, the planning board did not have any official business before the board, and that you felt my request was made personally.
Correct.
Correct. So I'm curious as to how you can say that you didn't know any of these were on the board when you, in our agenda, when you just told me you knew they were.
There's, you got two different issues. Do we have official business for those addresses, or they're on the agenda? Those items were on the agenda?
We had people who asked for them to be on the agenda.
On the agenda, okay? And the question, and my response was, the fact that they're on the agenda doesn't mean that the planning board has official business. My only concern was, if you were making a request for public records, that if you needed information on those particular addresses, and there was no official business, then you should pay for them.
There was, there were residents, including yourself, that put those on the agenda.
Was satisfied by Ms. Mary.
No, she wasn't. Actually, after you sent me that email, after you sent me that email saying that they were personal, I received an email eight days later from Ms. Mary with only Gold Street and A Street on it. So again, I'm being blocked from Pine Street North, for whatever reason. I'm not sure why. I can't get the public records request for Pine Street North. Do you own property there, correct?
Yes.
So you're not allowed to speak to me about this?
Oh, I can speak to you.
And you do work on property there, right?
That's irrelevant. What I'm saying is, you made a request, okay?
Is it irrelevant? Because I'm asking for records, because we had somebody approach this board about why a certain property has a water line brought into it, and why they have not been able to get their water line. And we have email of that. So that was something that was put on our board. You did work on these properties, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So with that being said, why am I still not able to get these public document requests of property that you own or buy or work on?
My response to your public document request, if you had information, if it was a matter that pertained to the planning board.
That didn't?
I don't know.
You weren't on the board at the time. Did that pertain to the planning board?
What does the water got to do with the planning board?
It was before the planning board.
Okay.
It was before the planning board for a site plan review because of a water issue. And we had multiple emails asking to be put on the agenda.
I disagree, because I didn't see.
You weren't even on the board at the time, why do you get to pick this?
Any record that reflected a site plan review for a water line on Pine Street North?
Did we not have an outside person from a board ask for 11A Street and Pine Street North, and then you yourself asked to be on the agenda for Gold Street, correct?
Go ahead.
So what was wrong with me as a member of the board, asking my secretary for records, so I had the proper information to speak to residents about? Because a lot of the time, residents come here, and they are told, like the gentleman up here today, we'll move that to next meeting, we'll move that. So because it was on the agenda, and then we moved it again, I asked for information. How come Holly sent me Gold Street and A Street, but I have not yet gotten Pine Street North?
I have no idea.
Is that not bizarre to you?
No, I knew that she sent you something, that I read it, I have no idea.
So why did you tell me I couldn't have the records?
You have a public records request, it wasn't satisfied.
Why did you tell me I couldn't have the records? And then eight days later, have Holly send me half of them?
I never spoke to Holly.
You just told me you knew Holly sent me something.
Mr. Seelig sent me an email, and his email was that, if my memory is correct, to put the man to rest, that the information should be released. If that was his decision, I'm fine with that.
So how come I haven't received all the records?
I have no idea.
So can you make that happen?
I can't make it happen.
I made the request to your board, and you're the chair.
Okay, do this. You make another request to the board that I'm sitting on now.
Yep.
Okay, and we'll look at that request.
And you're going to tell me I have to pay for it, because now I'm not on the board anymore. I know what the games are in this town.
I mean, what do you want me to tell you?
That's fine.
I have nothing to do with public records requests.
You do, because you're a chair, and you're telling me I can't have them. And you're telling me I can't have public records requests that are pertaining to property you own and property you work on.
That's, you're saying that it can't happen.
Yours, I have an email right here, you saying.
If you have a public record request, and it has a matter that's got to do with the planning board, just like Lady Letta said, then you are entitled to it. Now, agenda items aren't official business. If we had a matter, a site plan approval, a subdivision, then I agree with you. Then your public records request could have been filled. All right? Beyond that, I don't know. I can see your request. All I got was.
I have a question.
Okay, let me just finish. I got, I got your request from Joanne, I responded. Charlie was on vacation. When he came back, he said, probably the best way to handle this is to give her whatever paperwork. I never responded to Charlie, because that's his decision. I don't make those decisions on public records. I mean, you're entitled to any public record that you want. If it's official business, and it goes through the planning board secretary, then you should get it. If it's personal, then you should pay.
I have two agendas that show those addresses twice on there.
No, the agenda's not official business, so.
It's not official business as a board member? I should be looking into things that residents come to and ask for us? That's not our job as a board member? That's not, that's not your job? That's not what you've been elected to do on all your, all your boards?
Our boards are elected to do what?
To be the voice of the resident.
Yep.
And get answered when they ask you, correct? Okay.
I have, I have two questions. One is, how is an agenda item not official business when it's written on a document to be spoken at a meeting? How is that not official business?
Well, let me just say this. An agenda item is for discussion purposes. And my feeling is that if you have a particular address that has an agenda item, then those people that own that property or buddies should be notified.
They're posted, right?
That you are going to be discussing them. That's my opinion. If the board.
So if you're on an agenda, you should be.
So if the board chooses to develop another policy, then I'm okay with whatever the board decides. You can put anything you want on the, on the agenda. It's just a matter of whether or not that's going to be discussed. And to my knowledge, unless you show me that there was either a subdivision or a site plan that was in front of the board at the time, you're wrong, then I don't have a problem discussing it. As long as whoever the people are that's involved should be notified.
There was an email with a list of questions about a specific lot.
Okay, that, I'm down on a word.
Well, there was.
So if you want to make another public records request, we'll review that.
Hold on. Did you ask for the public records when you were holding your seat as the planning board?
Yes, I did. And I went directly to the secretary, like I was told I was supposed to. And she actually never responded to me, only Mr. Seelig did.
So I don't think that she should have to request again, she's already requested.
I'm not going to put another public records request in for the same thing I've already done. It hasn't been fulfilled.
I haven't seen that request, so.
Oh, I will thank you.
Your next option then would be go to the secretary of state and say, look at something.
I've already done that.
Okay, then, then let it play out. And if the secretary of state office gets back to us and said that he orders us to release whatever information you wanted, then we'll pass that on to the assessors or whoever. Because it was, I guess it was assessors information you're looking for, right?
I asked for public records in general, anything that we would have needed to answer those questions.
Okay.
So.
So, so it's got to play out in the process. If she filed an appeal, we'll go to the secretary of state.
So, so my thought process is that when we do have an agenda item, if we have the site plans on hand, then we won't have to continue our residents to come back every two weeks?
No, if we've got all the information, you're right.
So, so like the site plan for, well, the site plan for 241 Franklin Street should have been here tonight, and also 894 Plymouth Street, so that we could have addressed Amy Dwyer.
Because that is here.
That's a business person trying to do Halifax.
Good.
A business in Halifax, hold on. And now they are delayed in doing business again. And that's detrimental to our town for businesses coming here. And so the preparation, and when there's an agenda item, I believe that we should have the folder in front of us, so that we can look at things and understand what's going on without delaying our townspeople and anyone wanting to rent from our townspeople, or, you know, industrial business owners, so that we can get them through the system quicker without their loss of income.
I agree.
And that's what I was doing, Alan. I was looking for information on our agenda.
Okay, so I agree.
Okay.
I can tell you that.
Preparing for an agenda item is important.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Can I add something?
Sure.
I tried to put an agenda item on, and I was told that you couldn't go on. You just said that if somebody wants to put it on there, they can put it on.
Your, to answer your question, you wanted to put an agenda item relative to Pine Street North, and I don't remember exactly you wanted access. And I said that I would put it on for discussion purposes, to determine what official business the planning board had. That was my response.
But you just said if somebody wants to put an item on the agenda.
We'll discuss it.
No, you didn't say we'll discuss it, you said it could be put on. I asked to have it put on there, and I was refused.
Well, let me just.
Gordon, what was the address?
Wait.
Pine Street North.
Oh, it's not funny. The same records that they're not allowing you to use.
Let me just say this for the record. The particular agenda for Pine Street North, okay, is known. So if.
It is?
Yeah.
What is it?
You know, I think.
What is it?
I think the agenda is that you folks have an issue with the owners of a particular lot down there. And if that's the case, you can have all the issues you want. But I don't know that this board is in a position to help you with that problem that you have with that particular home.
Did you look at my email?
Can I ask why that assumption would be made?
Let me finish.
Let him, let him finish. So that's, that's my other question.
So what was, what was your issue with my email asking to put it on?
Because you made a reference to Pine Street North. Did you make a reference to a particular address on Pine Street North?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
Did I have to make an address?
Yeah, I would, why? Well, why not? How do we know what we're discussing?
I wrote that in the email, and you read the email.
I think the protocol should be that when we're discussing items with the planning board, that we should be, just like Ms. Trup just said, we should have all our information, so that when we get here, we don't have to continue. Your email was vague.
No, it wasn't vague. It was not vague.
Okay.
Did you read it?
We agree to disagree. And if you had given, and I did allow, told her, that we would put her on for discussion.
Where is it?
I have no idea.
Well, here's, here's our agenda, where is it?
I have no idea.
Who wrote the agenda?
You wrote the agenda. You wrote the email to her, I had no idea.
I wrote the email, and she wrote back to me and said, you said I couldn't have it on there.
Well, I think you need to read it. If you want to put her on for the next one, and I will do this, we will put her on for discussion. If there is a matter.
No, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute.
If you're going to do a witch hunt, you're not going to be part of the witch hunt.
I'm not witch hunting anything.
Okay.
I have a right to speak without being spoken over. But. Did you read my email of what I wanted it on there for?
Yes.
What was it?
Relative to access, and relative to maps, or changing maps.
That's right. And what is that? Doesn't have to have an address. What does Pine Street North predict, show on our map?
What does it show on your map?
What does it show on the town map?
You tell me what it shows on the town map. I haven't read the town map.
That it goes through where it's not.
Okay. If that's what you're saying.
Oh, Alan, come on.
I.
You act like you don't know.
I know all about Pine Street North.
Yeah, I have to.
If you have a particular, if you've got a witch hunt.
It's not a witch hunt.
I'm not going to participate or let this board participate.
You don't have a choice.
In witch hunts, okay. I don't have a choice. Okay. Do we have any other business? We have notices from?
No, I would like to ask you a question on the assumption of you guys, because that is an assumption. Because I got an email from a Realtor asking to have something put on the agenda. So the fact that you think that I'm having a witch hunt and grouping me in an assumption, that's an assumption. And you grouped me into something that's, I have an email that will show you that I was not on a witch hunt. You know what I was doing when I asked for public records? When I asked for public records, I was trying to find out how each other lot on Pine Street North became buildable, and how, so that I could be prepared for the June 18th meeting for the people coming to be heard. I wanted to be prepared. So I figured if I saw how anything was done, then I'd be able to understand what our decision was going to be. So that's, that's funny, because I was just doing my job. For anybody who needs to be on the planning board on an agenda, which is an official business item, I take everybody who wants to come here and say something extremely seriously. Because it's, it's a big responsibility to care about what happens into like, look, okay, well, we want to make sure that it's the same. Like, so how does this happen here, and how does that happen here? It there's, you can't just look at one lot sometimes and understand how the other ones became what they did, you know?
Okay. I'm fine with that.
So please don't lump me into an assumption about a witch hunt, because that's very inaccurate.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is we have notices from Bridgewater and Pembroke. Did everybody review those?
A little bit. I would like to read a little bit more about them, but we've been covering a lot of material tonight.
Does anybody have any questions on them?
It's a little hard to make determinations on anything without the site plan or a map of what's actually happening.
Okay, the notices from the surrounding towns are notices based on National Law's chapter 48. When they issue special permits or errands, they have to notify abutting towns. So these notices have no impact, other than the statute requires that we notify them, and they notify us of the decisions.
Yeah, they probably notify us just in case we did have a problem with it somehow.
We probably wouldn't have any standing, it's just that's the way the statute reads. Rick, any questions?
No.
Are you all set?
I think I'm good. I think I'm good. Looks like there's going to be a quick pull coin, hopefully, some Pembroke on Oak Street.
Okay, is there any other business we need to discuss in front of the planning board?
I'd like to make a motion for Pine Street North on the agenda for the next meeting.
And I'm going to ask you what the planning board has to do with Pine Street North? And then I'll take, let me get a second first. You got a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I'm just going to ask.
This is the, and this is the process going forward. If you want to put something on the agenda, you have to make a motion.
No, no, no. We don't want a limited debate. If it's matters to do with planning board, I have no problem at all discussing, whether it's site plans or anything else, as I indicated.
The streets are purviewed.
Okay. The streets are what?
Are purviewed under the planning board.
The streets are purview when they become public waters. So what is, what is your question or what is going to be the topic on Pine Street North? Let's agree with that. What's the topic that we need to discuss on Pine Street North that has, that's relative to the planning board?
Construction of the road.
Okay.
Location on the town map.
Okay.
Drainage on the road.
So we have a motion and we have a second. I got a question before I'm going to go to the vote. The information, are you looking for information or are you going to provide the board with information on Pine Street North?
Oh, okay.
I have a motion and a second. And go to the vote. Amy?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to vote yes. Okay? And I'm going to tell you now, but we're not going to have a witch hunt on Pine Street North. Okay, and there's no other business in front of the planning board, I'm going to have to step the motion to adjourn. So I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to adjourn at 9:35.